At six oh seven, Mr. Hume, come on up. Thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
You're one of these special people that just loves us here and we're happy to have you.
Well, thanks, I'm happy to be here. It's a good handout for everybody.
Oh, good, you promised that, yeah, last time.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing it.
Sure, I sent an electronic version to Tom because I have Tom's email too. So you can.
Let's fix that.
Do what you would like to do.
Run all, everybody's.
Whatever, whatever you'd like, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
As an alternative, you can send it to the planning board and sometimes that gets to everybody, but.
I will forward it, I will forward it to everyone with their email addresses and I'll forward a copy to you, to you as well. That way you'll get it, everyone.
Terrific. And basically, what it is, you've seen generally all the information that's in here. First, in September, at the September Planning Board meeting, we went through the inventory and analysis and you had comments about that. Integrated the comments in there. It entailed the unemployment rate in Hubbardston, which is just three point seven percent in two thousand sixteen, it's quite low. We went through measures of wealth, like per capita, which was a little bit, which was lower than the state. That's very common for communities around this area because family households are larger. In Hubbardston than they would be in the Boston area generally, you have more people living in a household. So it shows that your median household is higher than the state, your median family is higher than the state. Your poverty level, which is actually per capita, per person, is the, is quite low. It's just five point eight percent compared to some other communities, like Templeton is ten point four. I included Princeton in this version of the draft too, it's seven point five percent.
Really?
So I was surprised too. Now, that.
Disparity.
Yeah.
The disparity, yeah.
Yeah, it goes by how much money you're, you're taking in. It wouldn't include money that you have in the bank or assets that is not coming in your earnings precisely. So Princeton, that was kind of surprising.
Why is that? Why, why? It seems.
Well, that's, that's the way poverty is measured, that's the way the feds do it. It's all based on annual earnings. So this measure of wealth is indeed an earning.
Correct.
Maybe we ought to label it earnings. Hyphen earnings.
Based on earnings.
Based on earnings, yeah.
Now, where would they get that number from the, from the IRS type of thing?
They get it from the census.
Which gets it from the IRS, I think. Not with names on it, but with the data, doesn't it?
Perhaps, I'm not sure. Either that or it's through like, you know, like the American Community Survey that they do, the two thousand fifteen is the latest. They do a sampling of people and do it that way. That's why it's not quite as accurate as the, the ten year census, last one that was due, done in two thousand and ten. So they might have done it that way, I think that they did, they might have just got.
That's the wrong way you're gonna get intermediate years.
Yeah, yes, that's the.
American survey, yeah.
Unless you wait till two thousand and twenty-two for the next.
What is the, what is the medium? What is the poverty rate, do you know?
The poverty rate, that's just five point eight percent and that's individuals, it goes by individuals.
Okay.
That question actually was asked in September and I didn't know the answer and I looked it up and, and it was, it's, it's individuals. So five percent.
What Tom's asking is, how much money is it?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, that's the question, yeah.
That's a good question and I can include that in here.
Well, what's that first column, per capita?
Per capita, that's per person.
Oh, okay, yeah, and then per household and per, yeah, okay.
Yes, yes, correct. So I know it's a lot of information tonight, so you know, we can go through it like we're doing. But I was gonna ask if folks could make comments on this over the next two weeks. You can bring it home, read it, read it through and maybe we could have a contact person.
Is it a PDF? Can you stick comments right on the thing?
I could do a Word or a PDF, Word and/or a PDF.
Can't you, if it's a PDF, can't you put balloons on it?
Not a PDF, it's designed so that you can't do that, but Word I could.
Okay.
So I could send it Word if you'd like.
Would you just send it to us as, you send it to us as a PDF?
As a PDF, I can send the Word version tomorrow.
Pretty sure you can stick.
I sent you that, I already sent that email to everyone, so.
I could look into it and see if.
Doesn't matter.
One of the staff persons.
We can write the comments on a separate piece of paper.
So if you wanted to, you could send it directly to me or most communities have a contact person where members on the planning board would send it to that individual and that individual would send me all the comments all, all at once, so that would be up to.
We, we have one of those.
Oh, I'll do that. That doesn't, that's not a violation of the open meeting laws, as long as I don't comment. I'm just gonna gather the comments of all of the jobs.
No, that makes, no, that's not.
Yeah, you're not, you're not timing or delivering rating them.
And so we've got the measures of wealth there. Then we had the number in types of jobs in Hubbardston and you're wondering how the state comes up with those numbers. And I put some information in here. Employment and wage data are derived from reports filed by all employers subject to unemployment compensation laws. So that, that's how they come up with the, the businesses there, which is why it looks like it's a smaller number. Because it's just businesses that are subject to unemployment compensation laws.
What chart, what page are you going for?
That would be number four.
So you're reading down the bottom there?
Yeah, down on the bottom, under where it says the number in types of jobs in Hubbardston. And on the next page, it shows the number of establishments and that's where they get this, this data here, the average weekly wage. For the years two thousand and ten through the year two thousand and sixteen. You can see a positive thing, the average weekly wage increased over those six years by twenty point eight percent in Hubbardston, which is very good. The inflation was a lot less than that. So that, that's a positive thing that's happening in Hubbardston too. Also, I wanted to point out too, we talked a little bit about issues like how much revenue commercial was bringing in, how much industrial was bringing in. Now, we added a couple of other different towns too to compare you to them. We added in, we had Ashburnham, but we added in Barry, Oakham. We had Phillipston, we added in Princeton.
This is on page seven, right?
Yes. Under economic sector contribution to local tax base. So you can see, but, but before I go into that, I, I wanted to point out on page seven. Should be noted that Hubbardston's average FY seventeen single family tax bill is just three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars annually. That's lower than just about seventy percent of Massachusetts communities. I thought that was very interesting. Because you're not getting a lot of taxes from commercial or industrial if you compare yourself to a Templeton.
Could you, could you get on the roof and shout that?
Increasing viewership, ninety percent of the towns hearing that right now.
That's very interesting, yeah.
It is, I thought it was very interesting. You're ranked, there, there are three hundred and fifty-one Massachusetts communities, you ranked two hundred and forty-five. So that means two hundred and forty-four communities have a higher single family tax bill annually than Hubbardston. So even though you're not taking in a lot of money from commercial compared to Templeton or Westminster or Gardner or industry, your single family tax bill is pretty low.
And that's two seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
That was two thousand and seventeen data.
Fiscal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fiscal, yes, fiscal.
The other thing is, this is ninety-four percent of our, our taxes are generated from business and industries. Do you have a chart in here, maybe it's not there yet, comparing it to other cities and towns?
Yes, we do. We break it out.
Page nine?
Actually, it would be on page nine and page eight.
Bottom of eight?
The, the top of page eight right here, now this is commercial and on the bottom of page eight is, is industrial. And for commercial, the percent of total tax levy for Hubbardston is two point one nine percent. So it compares it to the other towns, your, your neighbors, basically. Ashburnham was right about the same, two point three six. Barry was high at six point two eight. Oakham was two point six five, so about the same. Phillipston, a little bit higher at three point four three. Princeton was lower, Princeton just had one point two eight percent. And Templeton is, is up higher, so I'm not surprised about that, five point nine six percent. Then if you get down to the industrial, down at the bottom of page eight, you're at one point two three percent. You're above Ashburnham, which is just point seven five percent. Barry was two point two. Oakham was just a point four one. Phillipston was just point one six. You're higher than Princeton, which was just point three four. And Templeton was higher at three point one one. And Westminster was at four point eight two, so you're middle of the pack in terms of industry.
We're four out of eight, fourth out of eight.
Yes. So these are, the generally, communities of big interest in attracting commercial and industrial into the community would, would be to bring the residential tax rate or annual tax bill down. But your tax bill is quite low, seventy percent lower than, than, seventy percent of communities in Massachusetts have a higher single family tax bill. So those are, those are the facts right there. So when you go into the recommendation section, that justifies retaining current businesses in Hubbardston and having an emphasis on retaining your, your businesses that are, that are here. Because the average wage is, is, is fine and it, it, it just seems like you're, you're doing okay in those terms.
But with only one point, for instance, on the industrial tax base, with only one point two percent, two, three percent.
Right.
Of the community being industrial, you can't say that's adding any significant amount to the tax levy.
That would be correct and, and the rea, the reason why that is, from my perspective, is the infrastructure, you don't have the infrastructure in Hubbardston, you don't have the, the town water, you don't have the town sewer. But not only that, you don't have any highway access. So my thoughts are Gardner and communities along Route Two have trouble attracting industry. So if they're having trouble, why would industry locate in Hubbardston where you don't have access to Route Two or Route one ninety? When they could go to the other communities, Lemonster, Fitchburg or Gardner, who have the right infrastructure to.
And they have the labor costs.
And they, yeah, they have labor.
That's a big factor.
Exactly.
Where do solar farms come in on tax levy information? Should there be a separate category for that?
It's not taxed that way.
I know, but it, it revenue brought into the town.
There is a prediction in the five year, five year fiscal plan, five year financial forecast that, that our accountant did. Presented last, I don't know, February, man? And he had a forecast, but he was apparently not informed about the solar trend. He predicted local revenue is going up at two percent. And that means the, the superimposition of, of the solar systems on top of that drives it up much higher than that. But they weren't there, they were absent. So they're not really counted yet.
One of my things is, one of my questions is, um, and confusion for me is they say that the residential rate is ninety, ninety-four percent of the tax revenue generated.
More than that, ninety-seven, I think.
Well, whatever it is. Where does the solar farms fit into that and where does the DCR land fit into that? Because D, DCR pays three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, or payment of new taxes. And you can't find out where that money is, does it go into just the residential? Like the residential land or regular taxes raised?
I, I believe that, I, I just got, and I don't pretend to understand, but I just got the, called the recapitulation of the tax re, uh, tax levy. And the so-called pilots are accounted for and pilot money goes to the general fund. But it's not part of the real estate levy. Am I making sense?
See, we're talking between the two of them, we're talking over half a million dollars, which would be, what's our, how much money do we raise in taxes every year?
Five point nine six, somewhere in there.
So ten percent, around, you know, between eight and ten percent of revenues are not being accounted for.
No, they are being accounted for. They're, they don't enter the tax, they're not real estate tax. They're pilots.
I realize that, Tom, but if you're not counting a half a million dollars of your income for the town.
What do you mean by not counting?
Oh, it's not counted towards the tax, in the tax levy.
In the budget, you mean.
In the budget, in the tax levy.
Yes, it is. It's counted.
But it's not counted, I think Tom is saying it's not counted in the, uh, the tax, the tax collected versus the tax rate. So that that money, half a million dollars, is not divided into what the tax rate is, know what you mean?
Right, yeah.
So if you put that half a million dollars into the, the total money collected and then divided by the total number of households, then the tax rate of fifteen dollars twenty-three cents would probably be lower.
By ten percent. I think what happens is you look at all your revenues, the cherry sheet, all this stuff, any, any money that comes in, dog licenses, pilots, everything, goes onto this list of all the revenues that come in. And then the, what's gonna go out. And all those ends affect the fifteen twenty-eight or fifteen twenty-three. All the ends affect it, not just the real estate affects it. In other words, if you, if you got a million dollars from someplace else, it would decrease the demand for real estate taxes and drive that rate down.
Are you sure of that?
I'm pretty sure, I'm on the edge of it.
Okay.
See, I was thinking, I was under the impression it didn't do that because it's, this, this money that we're bringing in is not balanced off on the proposition two and a half.
That's right, only, two and a half only hits the real estate taxes.
Real estate, right. So in that property tax rate is a real estate tax rate.
Well, for instance, what if the state just stopped paying the pilot on the, on the land over there? What would happen?
I don't think anything happened, we wouldn't have the extra money.
You wouldn't, it's not extra money, you wouldn't have that three hundred and what, eighteen thousand?
Right.
And you would then say, oops, we have to raise the taxes.
No.
The real estate taxes.
The tax.
We can only raise it by two and a half percent.
The, the amount you get on your tax bill is a tax levy. They take the value of all your real estate, okay, they divide it by whatever the.
The budget is.
The budget is. And that's what your, that's what your tax rate is.
That's what the rate is. And I don't, I think Tom's right, I don't think that money in the pilots goes into that, that formula for the tax rate.
Give me, give me another week, I, I, I just met with Brian, he was really helpful today. He started to explain it, he, he's like, he said he was two weeks away from doing a report that he does that will help.
Who's that?
Brian Bullock.
Oh, okay.
And I, I don't, I, I led with, I don't pretend to understand it, and then I think I talked long enough to prove that. But.
Sounds like me.
Give, give me about two weeks and I think I can bring this out, as to the effect of pilots on the tax rate. They're in there, they're counted.
I know the town, the taxes are generated.
Okay, so let's continue on with the report, we'll look that up as we go here.
So if I wanted to turn to page ten, we could go through the goals and objectives. You've, you've not seen that yet. The goal would be promote economic development that is consistent with the town's rural character. Objectives, maintain the Hubbardston Economic Development Committee and facilitate the town's existing permitting process. Support existing operations, large and small, to make certain that local businesses can evolve and continue to provide jobs and revenue to the town in future years. Support the local economy and sustainability of existing businesses and attract new ones that fit in with the community while protecting environmental values. Promote smart growth and sustainability by strategically planning to improve infrastructure in appropriate areas. Roads in specific. Promote Hubbardston's many resources that may be of interest to visitors. So that ties right in with the recommendation section that we reviewed last month, which were maintain the Economic Development Committee. Prepare and distribute a promotional brochure. Sponsor an annual festival. Support local business. Work to facilitate the existing permitting process. You're thinking about potentially applying for another round of Monmouth Regional Planning Commission's district local technical assistance for a permitting guidebook to facilitate your existing permitting process. And.
Excuse me, we're gonna talk about that tonight, anyway. Is that on the agenda?
We're gonna review forms and, and, but, but only ours.
I know, but that would be part of that.
That'd be a good part of a guidebook and a brochure, like that'd be very good. Because we're finding a lot of people are doing one part of it, but missing other parts that they need for permits and stuff.
So I have to.
It's a good idea, good, good idea with the guidebook.
A DL, that's a DLT grant, were they out yet or?
They're, it, it should be out within the next three to four weeks. I'll make sure that you get an application. We've done permitting guidebooks for communities before too, at no cost to the community under this program.
Excellent. Just while we're on that a minute, one of the things about developing a solar zoning issues, is the DLT grant available for, to work with us, to work the town on that?
I believe something like that would be eligible.
It would be. Can we do more than one at, at, at a time or?
Yes, he can.
Good.
Then we had to aggressively seek funding for road improvements, which you already do a, a pretty good job at. I've been told by our transportation staff at MRPC. And then identify new areas for economic development opportunities, generally smaller scale types of economic development opportunities in terms of commercial perhaps over time. So that, that's what we've got here and as I indicated before, it'd be great if you could review this over the next two weeks too. If you have more discussion tonight, that's, that'd be good too.
What happened to the, did I just miss it or in the support the local businesses thing? Vin came up with an idea to have a kind of loan guarantee fund. Is that in here somewhere?
I don't see that either.
You know what I did, I, I, I called a couple of banks or actually I had a staff member call GFA and Athol Savings Bank. And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe this isn't what you were, what you meant, but you, were you looking for maybe the, the town to utilize funds from a bank to loan note to small business, okay?
It's kind of backwards.
Okay.
I'm a business owner, I go to the bank, check me if I'm wrong, but I, I go to the bank and say, I need five thousand dollars. And the guy looks at your creditworthiness and says, well, we really need a cosigner. And so the town's funds could be used to establish the cosigning strength. The, the enterprise fund or whatever we wanna call it could exist with town money. And it would provide the backup to a regular commercial loan that would be difficult for the business to get by itself. How's that?
Close. I based, I based the idea basically on, for instance, a VA loan, that it's a guaranteed loan by the government. If you have VA benefits, you go to X Y Z mortgage company or bank for a mortgage. And because you might be shy on your down payment or you may have a little credit problem, the Veterans Administration will guarantee your loan to the bank so that they're more amenable to make that loan to you, even though you might not be a hundred percent creditworthy or don't have a full deposit. And so therefore, it becomes easier for people in those situations to have homeownership. Similar to that is what I meant with businesses here in town, because we, we have this pot of, of money from the pilot programs, which I, again, I was under the assumption does not go into the real estate, but it's used extra, it's, it's almost free cash. And if we took, just as an example, a hundred thousand dollars and said to ABC Bank, here's a hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna send our residents to your institution. If there's a loan for ten thousand dollars that you can make, we'll guarantee that loan. So if Joe Doakes goes belly up, then the town is going to guarantee the loan so that it gets paid off. Therefore, the business owner gets the loan at an easier method with some, like a cosigning.
But that doesn't mean ten thousand dollars moves from the amount of money that the town put in over to that loan.
No, no, no.
That ten thousand dollars sits there and is only used in the event of some concern.
Correct. Absolutely correct. So it's a guaranteed loan that the town is, is putting up. If it never gets needed, that there was, you know, that the loan is paid off and everything is satisfied, it's not an issue. But if, you know, the guy has a heart attack, can't fulfill his terms and conditions, the loan's guaranteed by the, the town and gets paid off. And it's a.
Or maybe not even paid off, maybe he carried it for three months. And the guy gets back on his feet and off he goes for the next three years, yeah. But there's just some financial impact that's backstopped, but not spent.
Correct, so that, you know, whatever business it may be gets some type of impetus if it's, if it's a needed piece of equipment or infrastructure or whatever. if it's, if it's a needed piece of equipment or infrastructure or whatever it may be. And if it is, it's a hard thing to get when you're a small businessman. So.
Most banks will, most banks don't give loans unless there's a reason not to give them a loan. When you, you run some pitfalls.
What did you just say?
A ba- a bi- a business, a bank will give a loan to someone if it's a financially a good deal. Because they're in the business of making money. Their business of loaning money to people. If they won't loan money to someone, there's usually a reason for it.
Sure. And one of the reasons is, I'm starting a business, I'm gonna be, uh, a construction business, I need an excavator. You go in there and they say, how long you been in business? Oh, three hours. You gotta have some history before we give you a, a loan. You know, and that's a problem. But if there was a guarantee in place, it may be a little bit easier for somebody with that short history of three hours, obviously I'm exaggerating.
Yeah.
But it may be an opportunity where they could then, um, get that money for the needed capital for their business. That was my thought.
I think that's pretty much like a, uh, in urban areas, they have enterprise zones. Where if you start a business in that zone, you get some favorable treatment or some backup, uh, like you described.
So what happens if someone comes in and wanna build, wants enough money to start a strip club? Those are the banks, the banks is now we're not gonna do that. Town of Hubbardston's gonna guarantee that loan that I can run that strip club in Hubbardston.
Well, no. Town of Hubbardston doesn't have to sign up every loan.
Well, how are you gonna discriminate?
You're not. It, that's a, that's a viable business. If the, the town of Hubbardston allows it in the zoning district and is allowed by right or by special permit, if the person goes through and gets that approval, then it's a business.
That's what I mean. I mean, yeah, you, you could approve nice business. You can't, there's no mechanism to vet it one way or the other. There may be businesses you don't want or may not be too excited about.
This fund could write a charter.
Well, let's not get carried away with everything. Let's, we're still in this initiative stage. Let's see if we can actually come up with a, a formalization of how we wanna do something like that. Again, it's an idea. I don't know whether, if it's ever been done or it can be done, but.
What did the banks say about, what'd you talk to them about?
Uh, I didn't actually, a staff person did, uh, at MRPC, another staff person. But, um, basically it was, uh, if, like, some, uh, some loans require like a ten percent, uh, down payment or whatever. You, you need ten percent of the funds. So if you're gonna take out a hundred thousand dollar loan, you need a ten thousand dollars. Uh, what if the, the town had the ten thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, to provide, uh, for a business? Uh, and the business could either pay the town back, uh, that ten percent from the town. Uh, the, the banks indicated that, uh, they, they want, um, funds, uh, from a business owner themselves. Instead of from another source. They wanted, uh, some, uh, business who had a, a stake, uh, in the loan. So that it would be more likely that it would be repaid.
Right. They want some skin in the game.
Right. Well, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's their standard operating procedures. But again, it just, it's a little twist on that idea so that somehow, you know, whether or not they're, they're shaky or, or maybe just new in business, there's a method to get them some funds and have that, uh, be guaranteed by the town. Yeah. And the town may never use that money unless it's in default. You know, that money's just gonna sit there and, and back something up. Guy makes his payments every week, girl makes her payments every month, whatever it may be, we're all set. Never gets touched. But in the meantime, it's sitting there and there's an opportunity for somebody to get going and start a business that they may need or get that piece of equipment that, you know, that silly crane that takes the asphalt to the roof. Somebody's gotta finance that thing, right?
That's why, I was business a long time and banks don't give money to people unless they have a good business plan. And if a bank, if you ask the town of Hubbardston to stand behind a business that doesn't have a good business plan, that the bank won't give them money. I think it's a rep.
Well, no, it's, it's not a matter of, of having any other concession except for what the bank will do. If they wouldn't make that loan, then we're not gonna guarantee it. The town wouldn't guarantee it. It's, it's gotta be a good viable business loan that is, uh, is somewhat easier to get because of that guarantee, like the VA loans. That was my idea.
So the, the town is not loaning the money or even deciding to loan the money.
That's right.
If the bank decides it, the bank decides it.
Right.
And there's one percent undecidedness, then you can close that gap.
But if, if, if a young person wants to buy a house and they don't have the collateral, they have some bad credit, and they go to the bank and say, okay, if you get your parents to co-sign, we'll do it. But that's, that's unusual. I just, I guess you see a lot of pitfalls with it.
Well, but, well, there's a lot of reasons not to do it. Let's see if we can find out a way to do it. His overwhelming recommendations in this, as I read through it, is you say it three or four different ways. Support local businesses, retain local businesses, uh, figure out how to survey them and figure out what they do and see if we can't get people to buy stuff from them. I mean, those are all the right things to do because you're implying that if we, I think you're implying that if you don't retain the businesses you have, they will erode and because of our infrastructure situation, location, geography, everything, hard to get new ones in. It's the old rule. It's much easier to keep an existing customer than to go find a new one.
Agreed.
So I, that's what I'm getting at of this. So we gotta figure out some creative ways to do that.
Any other questions for John?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, what was it? You were talking to me about the next step here.
Yeah, the, the next step. Um, uh, I can make a couple of phone calls about this, uh, to some banks, find out a little bit more.
Does any other town do it? You know, if we find this example, somebody does.
Yeah, an example of another community, right?
Or something like it.
Sure. I'll, I'll look for some kind of model. Uh, if, uh, if you could get comments back to me after you read through this word by word over the next two weeks, that'd be fantastic. And in December, um, the, the DLT runs out on December thirty first. So, uh, I'd be happy to come back and do a presentation on the draft, uh, to, uh, the public. Uh, including your Economic Development Committee, uh, and the Planning Board and others that you wanted to invite. Maybe we could even do a press release and we could do a, a presentation on all the, all the work that's been done.
Does it have to be before December thirty first?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
I mean, I, I could make a, an exception if we did it early January.
They're in the next room.
If, if circumstances called for it, because I know that December can be a tough month. After December tenth, it, the, the, uh, meeting attendance goes down. It means our Christmas shopping.
Yeah, we never get a group in that would be worthy. January's, we've done well with group meetings, but December?
I think, uh, I think we could do something in, in the first, uh, two, within the first two weeks of January.
Okay.
Great.
Can I, can I, can I put this online?
Oh, yes, that's up to you. Sure.
You okay? Guys okay with that?
That'd be good, yeah.
Have people, so, can we set a date tonight for the meeting and then?
Um, when you put it online, are you going to invite the public's comments?
Yeah.
That, that can, it's good, I, I, but it can complicate the response.
Boy. Well, I'm, I'm saying if people come to the meeting in January, you know, this is what we're gonna be talking about.
Well, we're talking about the next version of it.
Yeah, this is the first.
Let's wait till next month. We'll set everything up next month. I don't wanna set that up right now.
Oh, okay.
See what happens for next month. Then you'll be back with some more information and we'll be able to.
Correct.
Yeah. But putting the draft online, it's nothing, nothing wrong with that.
I'll put the draft online. I'll put it on Facebook and people can read it and comment on it. I think the more comments we get from the public, the better it will be received.
Absolutely.
Well, at least more people will be aware of it and then might create some interest for that.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, cool. So I'll say we're gonna have a meeting in January?
Yeah.
Probably just one devoted to this. You know, not a regular meeting, but a.
Right, a general meeting on this subject.
Yeah. Um, where do you say our lack of infrastructure, you know, sewer, water, access to highway makes it difficult to put in more business?
Where do I, there, it's not in there. I'll put it in.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to alert people to that. People have mental images of building industrial parks and whatnot. And they're, they're, for us, would be a huge investment with a very questionable return on it.
That's it.
And, uh, I think the regular business development type guys in Gardner and Lemonster and other towns can push in that direction, but I'm not sure we can. As you said two meetings ago, your professional opinion was, it would be really hard.
Right.
And we need that professional opinion expressed, in my opinion.
Put it in, I, I'll put it right in there. That's a good point, good comment.
I believe it's true.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I just really believe it.
That's why we're looking for alternatives with the small local businesses that we already have to not only encourage, but to promote and maybe even sustain. That'd be great. All right. Thank you very much, John.
Appreciate it.
We'll put you back for next month. You coming back and we'll.
I'll be here.
Do this together.
I'll be here.
Not sick of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we can think about that, what your idea, Vince, is just do a grant to people. Give, give them, if they have a good business idea for a small business, give them a grant to help them start their business.
Oh, that's part of the.
That could be a better way, that'd be a easier way of handling than a, than less complicated going to the banks.
Well, grants too are competitive. You would seek multiple.
Right. And you might have a little bit more control over what.
You can set criteria, you can set scopes.
You know, jobs, we're gonna get, how many jobs are we gonna create? How many?
You're gonna rank, rank things.
Yeah. You know, you're gonna bring in, uh, a restaurant that ninety percent of people in town want, or do you wanna bring in a strip club that nobody wants? Well, no, seriously, that, that is a criteria.
To bring in what nobody wants?
Sorry, there's only one or two people that want that.
What, I, I.
A strip club.
Oh, a strip club. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
You're the only one that wants one, so.
You know?
It's okay, after the job meeting, we were surprised already, so nothing else will surprise us.
Well, you know, what can I say? So it doesn't appear that we have any minutes to review. I don't see any. Do you have minutes there?
I don't know. She, that's, that's just anyone who.
That's solar fund.
Oh, that's solar.
I asked her to send the minutes over and, uh, we got none.
We need to, uh, think about that.
We do. And we have no correspondence either, so therefore we're in, uh.
Limbo.
That never, neverland.
Wanna discuss DJ pump for ten minutes? Or do we wanna take advantage of these gentlemen here and ask them some other questions?
You can't.
Nope, not till the hearing's done.
No, not about the application. About, um, I remember one night we asked Mr. Smith, right? Uh, about community solar. And he said, oh, that's net metering and there's some other people in our organization that know it a lot better than me. And, uh.
He pointed to you.
I think he pointed to you.
No, I was gonna say, that was, that was me that we were talking about.
Well, you were here one night and you also talked about community solar a little bit. Um, and we had five minutes. Can I just, am I allowed to ask a few questions?
You are absolutely, go for it.
Sure?
Yeah, what the hell.
Okay.
Give to the, well, substitute that.
There's some benefits to, uh, community solar. And, you know, it's jobs and, and whatnot, but there's like three big ones that I find to the town. There's a, uh, a benefit to the residential electric bill payer. Now, I'm talking community solar, not, uh, I don't know what the other kind is, industrial solar or something.
I, I follow you. Yep.
What is it?
I follow you, what you're saying.
Okay. Um, one is to, uh, get a discount on their electric bill. And I, I'm, uh, another one is the town can actually participate in a community solar installation and get a discount on the town's electric bill. And then, of course, uh, money would flow to the town more directly through the pilot. And if I understand it correctly, when the installation is put in, the pilot, um, is a payment for the inventory of the, uh, installation. Racks, panels, rectifiers, wires, et cetera, fence. That's, that's the, what the pilot goes for. But the land underneath it is still owned by somebody and taxes are still due on that in a real estate sense. Okay. Uh, and the pilot is escalatable.
In Hubbardston, yeah. You guys, you, your select board and the, um, assessors like to have the escalators. So, yeah, some towns do it flat, some.
Yeah, I think you can do it a couple of different ways, but.
True. The, the pilots we've done with you guys have been escalated, that's right.
Yeah, I, I looked at five of them. Three of them are with you and two of them with other people and they're all escalatable. Kind of a little bit escalatable. And, um, we had a, a selectman here one night who said back when they, they negotiated the pilot, he had to make a decision between the pilot or having the residents realize ten, fifteen dollars a month savings on the electric bill, and he chose the pilot. And I think that's not what I'm reading. I'm reading that all three of these benefits, a residential electric bill discount, a municipal electric bill discount, and a pilot are all available simultaneously.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so I, I'm just trying to come, I'm talking like I know what I'm talking about, but I'm trying, everything ends with a question mark, okay?
No, everything ends with a check, so far of what you said, yeah. I mean, they're, they're basically project costs that are, you know, valued in different ways. And, um, the pilot itself, um, towns do it a little bit differently from town to town. In Hubbardston, the pilot, I believe, refers to real and personal property taxes of the, the land underneath the solar project.
Okay, well, I guess it could.
Some towns do it just personal property taxes, I like treat it like a fifteen million dollar house. And just, instead of appreciating, it depreciates. And, um, yeah, that's just how, how we look at it. But you're right, the pilot taxes either the land underneath the panels and the materials or just the materials.
Or separately.
And, um, uh, the community solar is structured in two ways. There are some, there are some community solar financiers that want one hundred percent residential offtake. It's almost like kind of putting together a mortgage portfolio. You've got different credit scores and all that type of stuff. So the more you can have in there, the more stabilized of an investment you have. But then the other side of it is, what if we just put what's called an anchor offtaker is kind of the nomenclature.
Like a mall, huh? You get the anchor store and then you got all the little.
Sure, something like that. That makes sense. Yep, that's a good analogy. Um, in, in this, in this extension, it would be, you know, the town of Hubbardston purchases fifty percent of the electricity and residents from the area purchase the other fifty percent. But they purchased it in five kilowatt bytes and you guys purchased it, or the town purchased it multi-bangawatt bytes. But, yeah, those are all different structures. There's kind of, uh, many different ways to structure these projects. And they, there's a lot of nuance. The devil's really in the details. And a lot of it has to come with satisfying the regulatory bodies that make sure it's the right kind of community solar for the market that they're looking for, that type of stuff.
But customers or residents don't automatically get the benefit unless they sign up for it. Is it a sign up or is it a buy-in?
It's a subscribe.
Buy, you mean like cash down type, they buy, purchase? No, it's.
It's contractual.
Yeah, so mo- community solar in some states like Colorado, you purchase X panels from the greater array and, you know, it's kind of theoretical. But the way it works in Massachusetts is you sign up to a long-term deal. You, I'm sure you guys get calls from the Veridians of the world and those competitive suppliers that say, hey, instead of buying from National Grid at fifteen cents a kilowatt hour, you know, month to month, just buy with me at a three-year contract for fourteen cents a kilowatt hour and you'll save ten bucks a month on your bill. And it's a hundred fifty bucks in your pocket, a hundred twenty bucks a, a year in your pocket. It's a similar structure with community solar. Buy power from the, from the array at fourteen cents instead of from the utility at fifteen cents.
But it's subscription without a capital outlay.
That's correct.
Now, if I'm a, if I'm a resident of the town that has a community solar project, am I automatically gonna get into that project?
No, you have to opt in. Like, you have to sign a contract and it's, it's. No, you have to opt in, like you have to sign a contract and it's, it's usually.
But I'm, I'm not gonna get bumped from somebody from, you know, Royalston.
The only, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only rule is your utility that you're paying your electric bill to, National Grid in our case, has a territory. And if you're going to opt to subscribe to a solar installations output, you have to be in the same territory. Utility doesn't, solar power doesn't like to cross utility lines, it's, it's your town, your residency and the solar farm are all within National Grid's operating territory.
Okay.
I got a check?
I have a check.
Oh, please.
I'm not gonna correct you, cause it was good.
Well, please correct me.
So it's, so in the past, it's been utility and what's called load zone, the state of Massachusetts is divided into three load zones, there's NEMA, Northeast Mass, SEMA, Southeast Mass, and WICMA, West Central Mass. I can show you a map that shows that basically outside of four ninety-five out, it's National Grid West, so you couldn't sign up for a project in Brockton or in Newburyport, you'd have to sign up for a project in Hubbardston or Royalston or Pittsfield, I think Pittsfield's National Grid, but basically, that's, that's the level. And the thought is that as the new program's taking shape, because there's so many offtakers on the East Coast that there's not a lot of projects, cause there's just no land, there's thinking about doing away with the load zones, so you, then you.
Then you can cross.
Your statement may be right in the future, that's why you get half a point.
So you can see.
So, last question I got for you, then we'll get to the hearing, did you bring any information for us on that community solar?
There's nothing to provide, cause the program's not out yet, that's the problem.
No brochures or contact numbers or anything that?
I mean, there's not, there's not a lot to share, frankly, there's the, the smart, I could, you know, like we talked about a couple of times, I could just point you to the names of, of, um, we call them aggregators, the people that would subscribe hundreds of people to the Williamsville Road project or the Pitcherville Road project. But nobody's doing any of those contracts right now because program's not open, we don't know the fine points of the, of the program. We've been waiting for a long time on what's called a guideline from the D O E R that describes what does community solar mean in a post-estricus of the old incentive and smart program world.
But isn't it?
That's what we're waiting on.
Isn't it also true that we could use that time effectively to figure it out as far as we can as a community? And as a, as a municipality and as a, a, a bunch of people who could potentially subscribe to such a thing and save the hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty dollars a year?
As long as drawing a box around that savings dollar number wasn't the most critical path right now, it's just educating people on the concept of.
Oh, it's future, it's future, but we just figure it out. Cause people have come up to me and said, what's community solar, and I, and I'm, I'm researching it so that we can answer. In fact, in the last public hearing we had, somebody asked it and I fumbled around it and I said, we really ought to talk to Zach.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been pondering this for months because I haven't got much to share, but if, if we really wanna kind of have a theoretical conversation in, in that story, um, I will make sure that nothing.
Yeah, and I don't mean just you, I mean, we gotta talk to the other guys too.
But no, we, we, this is probably the second or third time we've talked about this.
Yeah.
I guess if, I guess I wasn't hearing it that clearly that.
Well, we, we have hundreds of viewers out here that have just been, you know, pondering this question and we're trying to satisfy everybody and, you know, the phones ring off the hook trying to figure this out, so we.
Awesome.
We're trying to satisfy our viewer.
Well, we, we may chuckle a little bit, but we have, uh.
Keep everybody happy. But it's important, it's important, it really is.
There's a lot of different problems, I mean, it's, it's part of my generic, you know, if you wanna call it that, sales pitch, so we're planning boredom in front of this, there's a lot of people that benefit from these projects both directly and indirectly and, yeah, you guys are just asking for an avenue to directly benefit.
Yeah, because, you know, the, again, as Tom said, some of the folks at the hearings said, how do I get it? Yeah, so, it's, it's good.
And it's not small potatoes, we have sixteen hundred and thirty-one houses in town, residences, and if everybody saves hundred and eighty dollars a year, like you, you talked about, that's almost three hundred thousand dollars. That makes the community richer and makes us have money to do other things.
Yep, but, uh, it's an argument I often use when, you know, a, a planning board is challenging, you know, the impact to the health and welfare. And it's, it's some of the benefits we bring, the financial side of things beyond the environmental side and beyond, like you said, the, the job creation and that, and that.
Yeah, there's a lot of benefits, but I need to stock in money.
Yep, totally.
Are you here for the planning board or the select board?
Select board.
Next door.
Oh, thank you so much.
No problem.
They changed the reading room.
Alright, well, thanks for that, that helps, and I'll entertain a motion to recess the planning board meeting so we can begin our hearing on Berega. One forty-seventh Williamsville's vote.
So moved.
A second?
I can do that.
Alright. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed, so forth. So we're in recess now so that we may reconvene the continued hearing on one forty-seven Williamsville Road for the solar facility. Zach and Dean, thanks for coming again, Bill, good to see you again tonight, didn't expect you actually, so it's a pleasant surprise. We missed last month's hearing, so we're pretty much gonna try to catch up from September, am I right, Dean?
That is correct.
Alright.
Did you review it, Bill, or have you reviewed their stuff, Bill?
I had a meeting with Sue Carter in, uh, Bill's office because the major thing that's still outstanding is finalizing our stormwater calculations so that we can put the last of the details on our plan set, so, um, I am just overloaded and behind on that, so that's the only reason that it hasn't been done. Not much has changed otherwise for you guys as far as the plans go, it'll be details about water management, uh, down here, about how we capture potential seep in the hillside where, um, where this new wetland was discovered. Um, we did go before the Conservation Commission and they voted to approve our notice of intent with a condition that we provide a detailed mitigation plan for this little blue area is our proposed mitigation area to compensate for the impacts down here in our, in our site.
What little blue area, I missed it?
Up there.
It's right up here, so it'll be adjacent to this larger existing wetland, which is where the consultants have, uh, recommended that we place it. It's a nice, healthy, larger wetland, yeah, we walked past that one when we were on site. So, the major reason that we're here tonight is to work out the last of the details about the entrance location. Uh, Bill's office has communicated with us about some of the concerns that the board still has, we've dis, we've discussed it several times, we discussed it on site. So, um, what we have is the overall parent parcel has a frontage of two hundred feet. So, uh, the owner has an existing driveway that has a, a utility easement that's along the side of it that complicates where we place our interconnection poles, uh, that's the reason that we proposed our entrance on the opposite side.
Well, that's not what you said the other day, last meeting, you said you, you put the road there because the people that own the property don't want it.
They don't want it there, that's the second reason, but we brought that up, the utility easement was brought up when we were walking it at the site, I don't recall if you, you were on the walk or not.
But the utility easement is with National Grid though, right?
That's right, there's a residential utility easement for underground utilities running along that existing driveway to, um, to the home, and then there's also a, I think it's a Commonwealth of Massachusetts easement that runs along that eastern property line, south, all from the road all the way down.
That's because they're doing a hundred and fifty acre wood cut back there along that road.
And that's a surface easement, right?
The easement exists because the property owner to the south had access to it and then sold it to the.
It comes down along this to, to come down to this.
Right, and they're gonna be doing a huge logging project in there this year.
Are they?
They're not gonna use this proposed road of yours to do that.
No, they have nothing with us.
No, they don't, they don't have access rights to that, they have access rights to this twenty foot.
I don't know why you can't use that road, I mean, Nat, you deal with National Grid is the same person, I mean, all you do is put the pole in.
It's not, it's, it's, it's very different and we can't, I mean, we can't use the easement from a legal standpoint, we'll never get our real estate to close over the fact that somebody else has an easement there before us, which is just a challenge from a real estate standpoint, there's an encumbrance. And then the second is certainly the landowners want this solar project to have a, you know, its own, its own driveway, its own gate on the driveway, et cetera, so that, you know, it's not a part of their day-to-day life and, you know.
That's too bad, I mean, I'm personally not willing to give up some trees and another driveway.
Well, what, what about the easement?
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, before we get into why, um, let me explain, I did not set up those, um, hearings for the scenic road or the shade tree till we had this discussion, so, that's why I didn't, um, advertise those hearings, it just didn't make any sense till we worked it out here.
Right, if, if there was not gonna be an entrance there.
And, and it's, it's, it's not an issue with, if this kind of a situation prevails, then that won't be an issue down the road, that won't hold anything up and we can do it subsequent months, so that's, that's why I postponed it, even though you already paid it and hadn't had a chance to tell you that. But, um, how can we avoid that second driveway?
I, I really don't think we can, I mean, first, we've got a landowner that is very clear about what they want and how they want their property to work. You know, you guys have, you guys have bet, um, Sidney and Dennis a number of times, they're, you know, very clear on how they want things to work, they're very clear on the fact that they believe they have rights to put two driveways into their property no matter what. They, you know, I mean, that's where we are, and I think from a real estate standpoint, I don't, I don't feel like I can if they wanted to and you, you guys wanted me to.
I guess it's a decision.
Okay, so, could we come off the entrance to the existing driveway, X number of feet, and then cut over?
Nothing, that wouldn't change, that wouldn't change anything, that wouldn't change any of the issues that I have.
They can't come in from here, from here over to there.
Or even farther up, farther north.
They can do an easement, they can do a bridge across there or.
Well, I mean, we could like do, like, I guess, propose anything, there, there's an existing encumbrance there, I mean, we have to get the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to release their right to that.
No, they'll, you'll be on the other side of that road, they wouldn't, they, they don't have an encumbrance, so they have a right of way across that road.
It's, it's essentially the same thing.
Well, no, but the owner can use that road and the state can use that road.
But they can't grant it to us. And we, we.
Well, you, you don't own the land.
But I'm putting, so I'm impacting the land, right, I'm gonna be putting underground utilities to a pole farm that's gonna rise out, there's gonna be four poles there at their entrance. Right, so I've got, um, I've got first National Grid to deal with that, they're gonna have to grant me a, an easement or remove their existing single phase from that area so that they can put the poles in. I've got, um, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to deal with to give me permission to use essentially a piece of land that they have rights to, and I've got a, a landowner to deal with that, that doesn't want it there who, you know.
The owner is giving, this Commonwealth of Mass, I, I, I find that a red herring because the Commonwealth of Mass only has a right of way across this land, they don't own it, they don't have ownership of it, they can't dictate who that owner allows to use that driveway. If the owner invited me to their house to use that driveway, Commonwealth of Mass can't decide that I can't go down.
I think there's just, I, I mean, I read it as a difference between driving over it and between, you know, installing medium voltage electric there.
But I don't think anything would be installed along that road.
Why wouldn't it?
Cause the pole is right at the end of the driveway, at the northern end of the existing driveway, and you can, you can take down trees and, and bring the wires in, one pole would exist to the, what's that, the west of the driveway.
Talking about here?
Yeah, come in a half an inch down on the paper, a real half of an inch, you know, and put in a pole and then shoot over to the yellow driveway.
But how do I get, how do I, how do I get my power from the system to the road, just essentially take this?
Same path.
Take this and just turn it this way?
Yes, only you don't hit the, you don't hit Williamsville Road, you hit the driveway ten feet in from Williamsville Road.
So it's basically you turn in, take a, I guess.
And I believe the wires are buried deep enough for the purpose of.
They've gotta come out, the whole point, one of the first things we had to work on, um, for the neighbor to the north was to take the four poles, instead of putting them twenty-five or thirty feet apart, spread them a hundred fifty feet apart, so that the poles, I think, start down here.
Oh, why can't you use the, just put a road across, all you have to do is eat a road across, uh, over that easement, a driveway, yeah.
Well, and also, that, that easement has buried wires under it, I understand that, but they're buried at a depth of what, four feet?
I don't, I don't know, I think.
Thirty, thirty?
They can't be in the easement.
No, they're off to the side of the state easement.
The, the easement that the state has clearly states that no buried utilities are allowed.
I agree, we, we, it was pointed out to us where that easement was approximately, and you would see it.
It's not like.
No, it's what?
It's not, it's twenty feet along the stone wall.
Yeah, it's, it's shown on the survey drawing that, that we.
But, but the wires are buried at a depth for a reason, you can drive over them.
They could put plates over them, they could protect them in an innumerable number of ways, yes.
Even temporary plates.
Correct. The thing that, man.
Of course.
The thing, the driveway location is not safe as depicted on these plans, it's an unsafe location.
That's the sightline issue?
The sightline issue.
It's an unsafe location, we're ripping down, taking down trees that I don't think should have to come down. You're breaching a wall or some sort of a wall that's there, okay, you're gonna have truck, tractor trailer trucks with this logging job going on. So you're gonna have your driveway, then you're gonna have this driveway with logging trucks going on through there, there's gonna be a lot of activity. They're taking a hundred acres of trees out there.
I, I have no idea or can't control what someone else is.
Well, I realize that, I understand what you're saying.
What you wanna do is coordinate with them.
Well, you're not gonna coordinate with the state because the state gives them a two-year period of time to take these trees out.
I understand that, but we're, you can, you can use the same road, you can use the same entrance to the.
If you put it on the road in there, you're gonna be competing with trucks, it's gonna be, it's gonna make the situation even worse, significantly.
Well, if they happen to be doing it at the same time we do it, I mean, that's, that's a couple of moving parts, but could you mind if we spend a little bit of time on the safety issue? I just, I just take exception to the fact that it's whether, like, calling it unsafe doesn't feel accurate to me. And I'm not an expert, but, you know, Dean and I have tried to, tried to get a better feel for what's safe and what's not, looking at the speed limit, looking at the DOT regulations for sightlines and, you know, as a, you know, a high, a posted forty mile an hour zone, we have to give three hundred and change feet to the sightline ends, and we have more than that. And I just, I just, I, I'm fine, I understand that we don't want it, but it just doesn't feel proper to me to say it's not safe.
Well, just let me give an example, I was in the fire department in Hubbardston twenty-five, thirty years ago, and I went to three major crashes there because of sightline people coming over the hill, it is a very dangerous area, we could, cause they're coming up the hill fast, you're in the flat and then they're heading downhill.
They haven't documented that.
No, I totally haven't, I'm just, we're, we're having a conversation here and I just like, I mean, it, it feels a little challenging, right? Like, you guys want something, our landowner wants something, there's some complications that can or may, may not be able to be solvable with Commonwealth and with the utility. And it's just, it's, it feels like we're kinda stuck in a little bit here and I wanna focus on those issues as opposed to the, the safety issue. Yeah, we haven't documented it, but just wanted to articulate that, I don't, I'd rather we don't just call it unsafe until one of us documents it as unsafe or, or safe.
I'll say to you again, when I told you at the site when I was there, okay, and I've said it to you several, two or three times.
You have.
If this was the only place and there was a reason why there's no other way it could go anywhere else in the world but through a new driveway, I wouldn't have that big a problem with it. But the reason the, the owner doesn't want it there is because they don't want it there is not a reason. And all, and I don't think all the other reasons you're giving are unsummonable, they may cost more money, I'm not saying that, but I don't think that driveway should be put in there under any circumstances, it needs to be moved over to that area unless you can prove beyond a reasonable doubt that that can only be put there, and one of the reasons is because the owner doesn't want it there is, to me, it's not a good enough reason.
I think I'd be close to agreeing to something similar to that, I think the way you said if it could only be put there, I would rather just say, how can we, how can we assure you that it's not commercially reasonable or something to use the existing driveway? And we'll call out, you know, labor, uh, excuse me, labor, landowner preference is not an acceptable answer. I mean, I can, I can put together comments from Real Estate Council for you guys about the easement, whether or not we actually have rights there. And, you know, we can talk to the landowner again about it, we can keep pushing them, but I, I do think there's a situation where we might not be able to do it. And I think, it sounds like you guys would be. we might not be able to do it, and I think, it sounds like you guys would be agreeable if we could prove that it can't be done, and I'm not saying it can or can't yet.
Well, proof would be from National Grid to say that there's no way they're gonna allow you to put an easement across there.
No, that, that would be an example of proof, proof that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts won't let us impact that area. You know, we can't put, um, we can't put an easement on top of their easement because our, you know, our site essentially is the leased area with an access easement to it and I mean, maybe we're fine, like, if, if everybody's right in the, in our land, I can get our landowners to come around, then like, I'm, I'm happy to fight the fight, I just. It just, it's been, it's, it's a challenging run, right, cause it's kind of a, a preference item from the planning board, it's a preference item from a landowner, and that's where there's, there's impact.
And you still have to deal with Bill's issue.
My idea is.
Not Bill's issue, Bill's, what he's brought up about the.
So let's try to solve it, if we went in like this with the existing driveway slash easement and just took from the road off to the side, if it, even was just a gate like that, which would be outside the easement. My understanding of that easement, and I was involved in the sale of that land to the Commonwealth from the landowner was that it's a, it's a common way easement, it's not specifically the DCR or the state. And I believe the landowner uses that easement as well, so anybody can drive that easement or access it. So if you took it and just moved the gate to there and ran your. Uh, rode the rest of the way?
I just wanna caution, like, I have been defeated by my real estate council using logic just like that all the time. I, I can, I can present it to them and.
What is his objection?
You, you have these?
I don't know, this is, I haven't, like, I'm just kinda talking theoretical here, I, I am not saying I can't do it, and I'm not saying I can, I just, I just wanna I, I, I just don't wanna get caught up in like.
This can't be, can't, there's, there's a difference between can't doing it and not wanting to do it. Okay, and that's, that's a pretty big.
No, I agree, I agree, and if.
And that's where we are with the landowner.
No, I think there, a scenario would come up where my real estate council may require me to get some type of approval from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and this and that, and like, there's a scenario that goes in a black hole. Right, how, who, how many people can, at the Commonwealth, like, those are the scenarios I don't know about yet.
Yeah, I.
And I'll fight the fight, but.
I, you have the copy of the easement? Yeah, I don't think. I don't know, I haven't read it, so, I have to read it.
Is this something we can read and understand now or is it better research?
Pretty straightforward.
Can you explain it to me?
Mostly it deals with putting gates and fences so cows can't get out. It says that the right of way shall not be paved, but the owner has the right to improve the right of way.
So the real question that I would have of my council is, does the owner have the right to grant me an easement on top of that easement?
Can't you go next to it for, at the access of Williamsville Road for twenty feet, make it a forty foot wide opening? And not encumber the easement, the only time you would encumber, you would cross over that driveway is when you're turning in within the right of way of the road, which is a public right of way.
So you guys would be more comfortable with a forty foot wide, a widening of the existing driveway?
Now, that would also work with what I'm suggesting there too.
I'm, I'm not sure that coming in at an angle like that is the safest configuration, I think that, I think that adds another conflict.
Well, if you moved it over next.
It would need, it would need to be further to the south so you could still approach Williamsville Road.
With a right-hand turn.
I think you have to come in here and then scoot it and come across.
I think that's the only workable way to come in.
And if you put your first pole, you said you were coming back seventy feet for the first pole?
I think it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet, I don't know if there's a scale on this thing, but.
No, that's, that's the first pole right there off of the right of way, so it'd be in this area right here.
Right, but you can use the driveway, but the pole can be on, on the other side of that easement.
Well, they still have to have access to it for maintenance, the utility would require it.
They can come down this road, put a, put a little bridge, lack of another word, a plate or a bridge or something across it, have access to the pole. And then you can continue the road further down that way. And that's not, you're not gonna be using that easement, um, for the state or, or, or anything else. You're gonna just go over the, the utilities easement to get to that pole. I don't see how that's legally, that would be difficult.
I, I'm not saying it is either, I'm just saying, I don't, I, whenever I use logic to work through these hundred-year-old deeds, I, I usually get myself into trouble and I just don't wanna promise something I can't do.
And, and I understand Cindy, their, their big thing is they don't want people running all the way down here by their house, I, I get that, well, their house is over here. But you're gonna be used, coming in seventy-five, say a hundred feet maximum and going across. I mean, and once the project is complete, you're only talking one or two times a year.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Or if we widened the existing easement or driveway, that would solve the same problem.
Well, it would be, I think, I think, you're, you're saying is correct, widening that, trying to make that turn around.
I think that doesn't meet the intent of your bylaw, there's a, there's a minimum separation between driveway openings in your bylaw. And it's seventy-five feet, I believe.
Yeah, between two separate driveways, but if you, you increased the width of that driveway.
Hmm, I don't know that we could do that because of the utility easement, it would be in between the two. Um, and your bylaw also provides for, uh, not more than two driveway entrances.
Right.
Unless having two hundred feet of frontage, which it does. So, and going, going back to the site distance issue, um, the mass DOT tables for stopping site distance for a forty mile per hour road, the stopping site distance is three hundred and five feet. The closest estimation that I, that I can do of the, of the stopping site or the site distance approaching that driveway location was four hundred and sixty feet coming eastbound up the grade from, uh, from the bottom of the hill and five hundred and twenty-five feet going westbound. Uh, that's basically where that road turns and you can see down to the driveway from there. So, I, I mean, I can document those, I can do something.
But they also, from the last traffic study we read about, it was, it's not necessarily what the posted speed is, what the average speed is.
All right, well.
Isn't that correct though?
There are two site distances, there's the intersection site distance and this is stopping site distance. So the intersection site distance is twelve feet back at a height with the eye height at three and a half feet observing an object traveling up the hill. And then the stopping site distance is the distance that it takes a car approaching the intersection to safely stop. And I didn't see it when I was standing out there that if you went twelve feet back and lowered your eye height down to three and a half feet, I didn't, didn't seem to me to be more than two hundred or some odd feet looking down the hill.
I would say you'd have to have a traffic study done and to, to put that issue to bed.
We could substantiate that.
Yeah, it's a survey.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't measure it from the intersection distance, but, uh, it's very close to the same distance from what I saw when I was on site hooking it and, and measuring it. Uh, so I don't, I don't think there'd be a great deal of difference. Uh, I'll, I can pull those tables too and, and we can, you know, get that substantiated whether there is actually site distance or not. Um, one of the things that I pointed out before about our driveway is that once the system's in operation, it's very, very infrequently used. So, uh, there would probably only be a handful of visits during the year, it's typically two to three times that our O and M people actually need to, uh, access the site. So it would be significantly less traffic than the residential driveway that, that would be across the, the road from it on the north side of Williamsville Road. So there'd be many, many fewer opportunities for conflict coming and going from that. Um, one of the things that we offered to you in the earlier discussions were signage, uh, we can put up signage such as hidden driveway, uh, during construction, we can have temporary signage that says truck centering roadway or something similar along those lines, uh, that would be acceptable to us. Um, offering some, you know, some traffic direction during periods of high traffic during the construction period so that there's somebody out there observing and warning, warning people.
But Dean, wouldn't that, what you just said for the exact reason why you don't need another driveway, cause it's such an infrequent use? Why are you putting in a whole new driveway with a whole new intersection, destroying trees and stone walls when you're gonna use it two or three times a year?
I, I understand your point there, uh, it's more about the complications that, that Zach is talking about. About being able to locate our, our poles for interconnection in that area, conflicts with the existing residential utility easement. Uh, possible conflicts in, in the existing easement, we'll have to get an opinion on that. But those are larger issues than just the owners.
So we haven't, I mean, we haven't, beyond the landowner issue, we have not fully explored the impact of National Grid and the impact of Commonwealth. We can do that, I think one of the main reasons we haven't got into it too much is I took away that the, the, the biggest pain of that driveway was the impact of Mr. Perner to the north. And whether I was, I mean, obviously I was wrong, but it was my expectation that if Chris was got comfortable with the modification of our design, so we're not coming straight in, the stretch out of the poles, that type of thing. Then I thought the board was okay with that, if Chris was.
Well, that was before we realized we're gonna be taking trees down and taking stone walls out.
Well, I mean, to be fair, you guys didn't even take the trees down.
Well, no, qualify that statement by saying that it, before we realized it was a scenic road to take the trees down, that, that, we knew that would take. So let's go back to this, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna offer this as another compromise. If this is the right of way and you need a driveway, a separate driveway, why can't we just give two feet or whatever that necessary distance is and put a new driveway there? Go from there as opposed to going there?
You mean to split the, make sure we don't touch the easement nor the Commonwealth?
The buried wire easement, oh, there's two, there's two things.
Actually, no, with, 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 um, Mr. Ritchie's plan right there, we wouldn't touch either.
Wouldn't touch either one.
Because the buried, the pole is right at the end of the buried wire easement.
Be a fifty-ish foot gap and maybe there's a couple of trees.
And I don't know what the stone wall situation would be along in here. I can't, I can't remember, I've been a lot of questions.
I don't recall a stone wall there because I remember looking down the easement wire path and not seeing.
That may be wide enough, do you recall Bill? If there is, the stone wall begins at the end of the easement or the side of the easement to the west of the easement.
They can't be so, so, they can't be that close.
The stone wall is, is to the east, west, down center side, and that defines the easement, the stone wall.
That's the north-south stone wall.
Yeah.
There's another kind of north-south wall at the, uh.
What about the east-west wall?
The east-west wall we're worried about, right?
Is there one?
East-west wall.
Parallel to the road.
Is there one?
It's hard to see, I, I'd be able to see it clear on the drawing file itself.
The distance between driveways?
They're showing the end of it here, basically, um.
The same driveway.
A bit west of where that power pole is, it looks like they're starting.
These little balloons or rock wall?
That is the stone wall, yes.
Oh, the little ones?
The little ones, yeah, that's the tree line, the bigger one.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, these ones that are right on the property line is the stone wall, that's a power pole there.
Yep, there's the, there's the buried wire easement, here's the driveway, there's a rock wall, okay, we'll have to come in over here.
Right there.
I just wanna point out that the existing utility poles that serve the landowner, relocating those and making them proof from construction is like four or five thousand dollars. And to say that that's a prohibition against putting something there is a red herring in my mind because that's pennies compared to the scope of the project. You could dig, dig those up and put them in some other place, put them overhead or do whatever, even temporarily. And then the only other point I make is, is both gentlemen from Burigo have made. Once this thing is built, that forty foot or whatever they need for the access goes way down because they truly only need enough for a fire truck and ambulance or any of their service vehicles to get in and out. So the landowner could grant a temporary construction easement that expires.
A, a wide one, as opposed to a short one.
And then, I mean, I know they need access for the utility vehicles to, to get to the poles and it has to be a certain width. But whatever they do for construction, likewise, that location could be a temporary construction location to be reforested and then the permanent access would be a single lane road going down to the back, there's a whole lot of creative measures that could happen here if somebody wanted to do it that way.
Zach, you said they couldn't do that before.
I guess I didn't follow, I don't see a difference in the, when we design a road, I don't see a difference in our road for construction or delivery versus for you to, for emergency vehicles. We do everything for emergency vehicles, and we're not necessarily ever building a bigger road than we need to, per se, I, I guess I, I see Bill's point that there are a lot of creative ways to.
It's whether you let the bushes grow in a little bit or not. Cause the roadbed's only so wide.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just having a little bit of trouble picturing.
That's not a passable roadbed, is it? That's a single lane roadbed.
It's generally a single lane.
Could I ask a question of our lawyer, resident lawyer who's not a lawyer? When you issue a grant, if you're the landowner and you issue or you grant an easement and you say something like, you can't put up a gate, or you can't, uh, knock that rock wall over, or you can't cut down my favorite tree to the person you're granting the easement to. And he accepts those conditions. Does that mean that the landowner couldn't come along and move that rock wall or cut down that tree? You, you're not, you're not reversing your obligation back to the landowner by requiring it that it be of the easement holder, are you?
Not a lawyer.
Okay.
I can see many answers.
I don't see your point though.
Well, there's some paragraphs in here that.
Oh, I see.
When I grant an easement to you, I'm saying you can't do A, B, and C, but that shouldn't drop, shouldn't block me from doing A, B, and C.
It's unilateral, yes, it doesn't.
The other part of that is state law has held that if you have a right of way, you have the right to improve that right of way to utilize your land as allowed by the bylaws. Uh, one of the statements there though says that it shall not be paved. But you still have the right to improve the right of way for the legal use of your land, and if this is a use that's legally allowed, I think that.
Temporary plates, a concrete pad over the wire, you can do these things.
Right, those are two different things, right, we're talking, the, the easement has nothing to do with the wires, right, the temporary plates or whatever you wanna call.
Well, there's two easements, if I understand it correctly, there's the road easement for traffic and the buried wire easement to somebody else. They're two separate things.
Exactly.
And if this guy says, oh, you can't damage my wires, you have to take remedial actions like a metal plate or a concrete pad or something.
That's right, I agree with that, I, I just wanna, I, I thought we were talking about this one.
Now, Ben Ritchie's solution on drawing number three over there. The, the new driveway wouldn't cross the wire easement.
If we spread.
Yeah.
And just had kind of a faux double, double driveway.
If you move the poles, then you could do almost anything.
I still don't see why the resident, the easement for his wires for National Grid are even close to an impediment considering they could be temporarily relocated such that they couldn't be damaged and then replaced in kind or they could be permanently relocated for, for pretty short money, what's the value of this project?
No, I, it has nothing to do with money, Bill, it has a hundred percent to do with the fact that there are, there are legal real estate impediments to doing this, and I've said a couple of times, I'm not sure if they can or can't be overcome, I just have not spent the time addressing that because I guess this is the first time I'm fully coming to grips with the, the fact that you guys, you guys have a problem with that driveway, not the neighbor. And that's, that's.
Well, the neighbor had a problem with it and he's willing to accept it.
Exactly.
Okay.
But you guys aren't.
Well, we haven't heard that from the neighbors.
I'm not, I'm not flat out.
No.
And I've been, I've been.
I'd rather hear that straight out than wonder.
Well, and I'm not, um, I'm not saying something new.
Um, we haven't heard that from the neighbor.
Well.
The neighbor hasn't been back since.
But we can just assume then.
The board did get a call, um, what's the gentleman, he usually sits at the head of the table, confirmed that last week, last month when we were here.
Oh, Craig. He's the only, he's the only other person here.
No, there was, there's another guy who. Was it the one that was the?
The associate member.
Yeah, I'll know his name.
Mark, Mark Dillon, Mark Dillon.
So I, I just, there was communication between Chris and Mark and he clarified, but it doesn't matter anymore.
Okay.
One more just, um, technical point. The, what are we calling it, uh, site distance, that applies no matter what, right? So we've gotta, we've gotta figure out site distance whether the, the driveway's where we want it or.
That's an engineering report.
But you guys want it, we, it's necessary.
I think, I think Bill was referring that we would need. I think, I think Bill was referring that we would need to survey it, uh, to be, is that what you would need to substantiate that? Or would you, would an engineering measurement by our office be sufficient to establish that?
As long as you s- put your seal on, you cite the ASH standard.
Well, when we find out where the road's gonna be, the entrance road's gonna.
But I'm assuming twenty feet, forty feet, fifty feet either way is relatively immaterial when it comes to this. So like, no matter what, I just, I just wanna make sure we have.
According to your own dimensions, you have enough, uh, extra to take it from the corner of the property. The western Williamsville corner, um, the yellow driveway.
Yes.
I would say, Zach, once you've, once it's firmed up exactly where this driveway is gonna go. Then you take your measurements, take your charts, and then bring it in and we'll see. I mean, if it's close, I think Bill's probably correct and we have to look at it differently. You know, if it's, if you need approximately three hundred feet and it's five hundred feet, it's not an issue. If it's three hundred feet and you have three hundred and ten feet, we have to talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'm just saying we're at about five hundred and twenty-ish and four sixty-ish. And if we move, we're simply going four sixty and five twenty the other way. So I just, I just wanted to, I guess, get clear dir- direction from the board. That you guys would like to see something with Dean's stamp or a survey that that's, that kinda clarifies the issue.
It's gonna vary depending on the location. Um, the existing driveway is gonna have a shorter site distance approaching westbound. Because it's this turn in the road, it's the horizontal turn that causes the obstruction. So this is gonna have a a shorter site distance, stopping site distance from here as well as an intersection distance. Coming up the hill, I'm not sure because I don't know exactly where the crest of the hill is. If this driveway is over the crest and coming down the other side, it could be much shorter from this direction too. I would, I would have to get out there and actually measure it. Um, there's a lot of factors that go into it. Where the crest of the hill is, where the driveway is in relation to that, where the turns in the roadway are. Um, all of those factors come into into play when you're trying to establish the site.
Well, you gotta get out there.
What normally happens? Do people do a traffic study or do they, like, we had one with the Pitcher Hill Road issue, they did a traffic.
Right, well, if it's a concern, if your consultant points it out as a concern, it should be documented as either being a concern or not. And my concern is an eighteen-wheeler having dropped off supplies. Now wants to turn left and go downhill and a car is coming up the hill. And I've seen those cars come up that hill. They don't go thirty miles an hour, they accelerate to get up that hill. And if they don't have sufficient time and he's just pulling out, we've got an issue. And that, to me, that's the biggest site distance issue. Uh, if a guy's coming up the hill to turn into the site, he's gonna slow everybody down and it's not gonna create a safety issue.
And isn't it correct that the eighteen-wheeler is a construction issue, not a life of the project issue?
And that's one of the things that I've been, yeah, I mean.
I mean, at a shorter period of time, you can.
Dramatic differences in this project and my biggest concerns are during construction. When this thing's up and running, it is about as benign as a puppy dog. I mean, it's perfect. So there are two different standards, in my opinion, when eighteen, fully loaded eighteen-wheelers are entering. And logs are leaving the site from, uh, you know, the clearing operation here. All of those are, those trucks don't pull out into a road very quickly. And cars move along that road very quickly. And to me, it, yes, the biggest concern is construction. And that's why I say maybe this is a construction road and there's a separate driveway. Meeting fire department standard for the permanent access to the site. And what they show here even, you know, is is for construction only.
Well, as I read this, this right-of-way. The the people over here, Richmond de Silva, who were on the east now, I don't know their names now, he owned all of that. He sold the easement to the people who owned the lot at the south. And then he sold the parcel in subject to the people who own it now, who then assumed the easement. Or grant, continued the granting of the easement to.
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually assigned to any transfer, transfer.
Well, the only one that can assign it, the only one that can assign it is the grantee. Because the grantor has given it to him and now it's owned, the easement's owned by the grantee, the people that are south, DCR. Now, if if they wanna assign it to somebody, they can, but it doesn't. Mean that the people who own the land cannot continue to grant somebody else the easement over that piece of land as well.
That's exactly the point I'm, I'm concerned about. If I can validate that, then.
But you don't have to do that. Because I think, you know, the KISS method is.
Yep.
We got the twenty-foot right-of-way, which brings to my mind the safety issues that DCI is gonna be doing, logging and everything else. But they're, they're not on the table at the moment. But if you have the easement for the wires. I can't imagine that's any more than what, ten feet?
Most likely, most likely.
Most likely, ten feet. So if we, if we enlarge this driveway another, the, or the, to the same distance as this one over here. Then you just run it that way and intersect down here and forget.
What's the cut distance on the road, at the, at the, uh, the intersection of our proposed driveway?
I don't know the exact distance, but it's probably, it depends if you include the turnout on the side.
I guess, forget the turnout.
It doesn't really, uh, doesn't really.
Cause that takes the site problem away from.
This is just a fourteen-foot driveway, so.
So basically, we've got, we've got about fifteen feet existing. We've called it five to ten feet and then another twenty feet.
Yeah.
So twenty plus.
You don't go over anybody's easements and we're moving, we're still making a cut in the wall, but at a different location.
We just have a big gap.
Yeah, I just use the road, go down seventy-five feet and move along. I just don't, I honestly don't believe that is an unreasonable expectation.
I would, I would think that might be preferable at Williamsville Drive, only because having the two driveways side by side. Doesn't really meet the intent of your bylaw, so I think that's gonna press us into having a a variance from that.
You go in seventy-five feet.
Is your board able to waive?
Doesn't conflict with that. The, because the, um, it says. In any non-residential district, no two driveways on the same lot shall be located closer than seventy-five feet. So this is a residential district.
Does it say anything about the residential district?
No.
It does not go into detail there. It does say no driveway shall be lo- located closer than seventy-five feet to any street intersection. And I don't know that that would be considered.
There's no intersection. So if this is a residential dr- district, so the two driveways can be adjacent.
Yeah.
And we could call it the same driveway. It's gonna be the same width for a frontage, you're just gonna go in. And go further west on one and south on another.
I mean, seventy-five feet isn't even sacred.
It changes the, it changes the character of the road then. It's gonna change the look and the character of the road up there. And I, I, and I. And there's no reason why they can't go down seventy-five feet and put a pole on the other side of that easement and just put a little cutoff road across. That residential.
I think that's what Zach was bringing up is that.
I guess here's.
We'd have to look at the, how restrictive the utility easement is as well. It's, it's probably not as restrictive as some utility right-of-ways are. But some, some utility grants, uh, don't permit any excavation or placement of fill. Within those easements, uh, which would be required for us to to build a crossing across.
But that easement was granted by the owner, right?
It was.
To, the easement's there to give power to their house. That's what that easement's there for.
Yes, but it, but the document was probably written by the utility and they, they like their agreements to be pretty strict.
But if, if.
So we, we would have to review that.
But say the owner says, I don't wanna bury my ground, my lives anymore, I wanna put them all above ground and I want my easement back again.
It'd still be an easement, right?
They'd buy it back maybe.
Yeah, I guess.
They still need an easement to come in and maintain those lines if necessary.
I, I mean, I, I'm having trouble finding a solution as simple as yours. That accounts for both vehicular and construction traffic as well as the poles I need to put in the ground to inter- interconnect my system. Right? Like, that's.
You're saying though, the first pole is seventy-five feet from the road.
It wouldn't be this, in this case, right? It would just, it would, they'd be, they'd have to be really tight here to go in seventy-five feet. You're gonna have your four poles in those seventy-five feet.
You don't have to, because you said on the other side, you'd go in and then put the four poles.
Yeah, but where could I put these poles?
Along the next road.
Well, you don't even have to put them on the road. You can put them in, I mean, you can clear a few trees out on the other side of it. I mean.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I.
You, but you told us first, the first pole of Mister Perner's, you told Mister Perner the first pole is seventy-five feet back.
That's right. But I, but I need space for another, but I need space for another four.
But they have to go along the road.
Yeah, but I can't go along, I can't go along my, I guess we're saying go in seventy-five-ish feet and then head west over here.
If this is your easement right here.
Yep.
You come in seventy-five feet, and this is obviously not the steel. You come in seventy-five feet, you put your first pole in.
Yep.
Okay, and then run your poles and your road back over to this way. So you run your next four pole, one, two, three, four, over this way, under your new road over that way. So the first seventy-five feet, as you drive down Pitcher Hill Road, will look exactly the same.
So basically, but but there will be one pole here.
Seventy-five feet.
And we turn inside that pole.
I think that's what he's suggesting.
Which is.
We turn after the first pole.
Finish this out over there.
Here, here.
And you're not removing any trees in the front here. No one even is gonna know you're there, except for that first seventy-five foot pole.
And we're gonna, but we're gonna have to obviously widen that out a bit and then put.
Yeah, the pole could be either on the west or the east.
A little bit just to get your trucks, cause it's a small.
Prefer the west, because you don't have to bury.
You can't bury, is there putting the poles up? You can't bury those.
The utility doesn't limit that for their, those are poles that have utility-end equipment on them.
You're not gonna remove, you're not gonna.
That's what the utility requires.
You're not gonna change the road character of what the road looks like. You're not gonna be taking out any trees or any walls or anything like that. Maybe, you know, some, one or two things right there, Ted. But, and I can't imagine that it's gonna bother Cindy that much. Because after the construction, I mean, during the construction, obviously, there's gonna be a lot there, but after the construction.
Point is, it doesn't matter during the construction anymore because whatever we're gonna do, somebody else is gonna do it five times as bad.
Ten times as bad.
Ten, yeah, I guess twenty-five times, seventy acres, hundred fifty acres.
How over a hundred and fifty acres?
Hundred fifty-five acres on the deed.
How much?
Hundred fifty-five acres.
Yeah, they're doing some, they're, they're doing beyond that, that lot. They're doing some, it's.
Well, they owe those ten thousand acres south of that lot.
Yeah. I, I don't, and if, and if, if the owner doesn't want to accept that. Um, I don't know what to tell you, but I think it's, that's not even reasonable.
I think it's reasonable not to allow me to use any owner issues and let me explore the other two. I'm, I'm a lot more nervous dealing with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and National Grid than I am with the landowners, technically. Cause there's no, there's no human contact, there's no conversation there.
Thank you.
And I just don't wanna tell you guys I can do something and we end up in this, well, Zach didn't try hard enough, that type of thing. Like, that's, that's what I'm nervous about. But I haven't investigated it all yet.
Might give us a peek at you. You said, I think, that this really isn't a financial issue, money issue. This is a legal impediments issue.
Until Commonwealth of Massachusetts asks a million dollars, but I don't anticipate that.
I, I, I haven't read the.
They can't, they don't own the land.
I just, I was, I was being a little facetious. I, until somebody tries to hold me hostage, it's not a financial issue.
I, I agree.
It's not a financial issue right now.
I can respect that.
No, from a infrastructure, shovels, in-the-ground wires, Bill's right. It's a, it, I won't even, I won't even notice it. Whether it's over here, over here.
Well, saving you seventy-five feet of road.
Thank you.
It's illegal.
And a, and a, uh, wall break and a scenic roads thing and a.
I still think I'm breaking a little bit of wall. I still think I'm going to scenic road. I still think I'm doing a traffic study. But it's basically what we're trying to do is improve, so you say, that the impact of the, the character of that, that road. We're trying to hide, hide our puppy dog even better.
Well, just so you, honestly, you, you heard the, the comments at that, especially the hearing we had on the, the solar article and stuff. Is the real concerns with people in town about these solar fields.
Agreed.
Okay, and this is part, at least from my personal point of view, this is part of it, you know? I don't have a problem with this particular system. It's way out in the woods somewhere and no one's gonna see it. I don't think no one's gonna hear. It's not gonna be a problem.
Yep.
But, you know, maybe Mister Perner will, uh, say it's okay now, but, you know, once it's in. People are gonna be grumpy about it, you know, and I, and I don't blame him, right? When we did a survey last year of what people want in this town, the number one thing people wanna do is maintain the rural character of the town.
That's right.
And if you just start ripping, every time we wanna put it on the solar farm and you start ripping down fifty feet of wall and taking down beautiful hundred and fifty-year-old. Trees to put a solar farm in, that's not preserving the rural character of the town, in my opinion. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I.
So that's, that's how I feel about it.
I understand.
Granted, the, the town's gonna get quite a bit of money and if it, I'm just, I just, I just don't understand. Why it can't be solved very easily. It's not, it's not an unusual situation.
Let's say, let's agree that we don't understand why it can't be solved very easily, is getting my point up again.
I mean, I dealt with, I dealt with National Grid.
Those old phrases people use, like, all you gotta do, you know, that, that's a Trumpal phrase.
Could I, uh, could I ask a question about process, while, while we're talking about the scenic, scenic road issues? Um, is, is that, does that have to go to a hearing before the planning board as well as the board of, of selectmen? No, it's just the planning board's decision?
Shade Tree Act is with the tree warden and the planning board.
Okay.
And the scenic road is with the planning board. We can hold them together.
Okay, so it would be one, one common hearing before the planning board to, to get approvals for that. If that's necessary for wherever the driveway ends up being.
If we can get through that, those act, I'd like to, before we finalize everything, you go up and just say, okay.
That section, whether it had to go before the board of selectmen.
No.
We have to, right? Like, that's, it's one of the most important things about the site plan, is how you getting there? Not getting there with a helicopter.
Well, I'm gonna look at it. I mean, I'm gonna stand on the ground and look, say, this is what we're doing.
So you'll, you'll check with your real estate committee?
I've got two.
Your attorney anyway.
I got three things to work on. I gotta work on grid, I gotta work on understanding that easement better than the three of us have tried to. The five of us have tried to tonight and, um, continue conversations with the landlord. But I just, it's a, as I said a couple of times, it's just, it's a little bit of a different, a, a different, um. Proposal to them now than it was, hey, guy, just make Chris happy and we're fine. Now, it's, it's a little bit different than that.
See, as I read that easement, and, and this is something that you, you can keep in mind, as I read that easement, the landowner. I can't even think of their names, quite frankly, has given that.
Current landowner?
Yes, to DCR.
No, but the previous landowner gave it to him and they inherited it.
Right, they, 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 they own it. It, I don't believe that prohibits them from giving you an easement over the same piece of ground.
Totally.
And if that's the case, if it's seventy-five feet, it's seventy-five feet. But the, there's no prohibition from the state that could stop you from going over that if the landowner gives you permission.
As long as my attorney agrees with that, then that's one of the three boxes we've checked.
Right.
I agree, definitely.
And if, uh, if they don't, and if we have to look at something like that, I think that's preferred than another driveway down the road. Safety reasons for, for no other concern.
Yeah, I, that to me feels worse, but.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, a sixty-foot gap with poles feels worse than, you know, driveway that exists right now that you fly by and you don't notice. And then another one that you'll fly by and you won't notice after we build it. I, like, no matter what, it's, it's, it's gonna be ugly during construction like anything is. And then things will get cleaned up.
I, I think plantings and, and moving the, shrinking the full width down will do a lot. Second thing I'd like to ask though.
Yeah.
I think Mister Smith, you just said, um, something about the, uh, shade tree and the scenic road. And you used the phrase, if it's necessary. And, and, uh, is there a case? Do we have a case here where they wouldn't be necessary?
Bracco's suggestion would be to use the existing driveway, which would not require removal of any stone wall.
Totally the existing driveway, no new cut.
Right, no.
In the seventy-five feet.
Now I understand, thank you.
Well, the only, but the only impact on the scenic roads is if there are stone walls. Existing in that section we're talking about and or shade trees.
But.
If there's no impediments to, then there's no need for the, yeah.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, no matter what, if, if we do the, the existing driveway and bang a right seventy-five feet in there. I still gotta get my wires out. I still gotta stay west. I still gotta stay west of the existing easement in the ground, or just west of the road, so I, I'd have to look at.
Fly over it, the wire's over.
Yeah, but no matter, that's a good point, I didn't think of that, yeah, you're right, I'll be above ground.
You're above ground.
I might not touch that, okay.
All right, but I understand the tree.
Obviously, you turn some trees to get in there.
I think, I think we'll be wanting to talk about it anyways, because no matter what, best case scenario, it's gonna be a little bit gray, and we'll want you guys either to say specifically, you don't need a permit, or we went through the process and the scenic permit was done properly.
Was it you or another applicant who reflected on the, on the two plants down on Garden Road? And that reflection consisted of, gee, if we had to do this all over again, we'd put a jog in there. Or we'd push the poles back a little bit, was, was it you gentleman, or was it somebody else that said that?
I wasn't at that hearing.
I would definitely say I agree with that sentiment, and that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, okay.
But whether I said it or not.
I think you did say that, yeah.
Sounds like something I'd say. No, I, I mean, we, we, we learn, we get better, and we do this stuff.
Yeah.
We do, and, and.
And that's really what we're trying to do.
Better what, what the utility will agree to.
Where are we with Bill's office doing a review, was, what's happening with that?
I owe them, I owe them some detailed technical information, which affects the final plan layout, so I'm gonna get that to them next week, so that they can complete their review of that. Um, I went to their office last week and sat down with Sue, uh, Bill's partner, who was looking at the stormwater calculations. Because I still had some remaining questions about some of the con, comments, and about what was gonna be acceptable in terms of modeling the stormwater from her standpoint. So, I got, I got the answers that I needed for that, I just need to make the time to complete the new modeling. Uh, which I'm gonna do myself, rather than relying on one of our junior engineers to complete, because it hasn't gotten me to the right place so far, so I'm gonna personally do the new stormwater model. And so the stormwater model and plans will be delivered to them as well as the board next week, we'll, we'll copy you at the same time. I did address a lot of the issues in, in their response letter with what I sent this past week. Um, included copies of a lot of the other supplemental information that was, was pertinent to that. So, they can, I mean, they can review that at the same time, some of that might, based on my conversations with Sue, I might provide something a little more uh, revised in terms of that, but I can repeat, you know, I can repeat those items and revise the ones that would be necessary based on her comments.
You haven't sent us anything new.
I did, I sent a package of some supplemental information. I didn't send you a new plan set since the, the one from last month, yeah.
That, that's not a new one, is, that's the original?
That's the original.
It's only new in that it, it shows this additional wetland that we located with Bill, and the proposed mitigation area, yeah.
Okay, so we need to, uh, wrap this up for this evening, and hopefully wrap this up next month, what is your timetable for reviewing? If he gets you this information by when, will you have a report for us by December sixth?
Well, we need, we would like two weeks.
Okay.
And I'd like a little bit of leeway, cause if he gets it to me two weeks before the sixth, that might not be enough time if there are any outstanding issues, cause you wanna button up. But, we will, we'll do whatever we can.
Okay.
I'd like if you.
And then.
So, three weeks before the sixth would be perfect, because then if there are any outstanding issues, we can button those up and then give you a final report hopefully.
And you, and you have Thanksgiving in there as well, whatever your timetable is.
And Veterans Day and.
So can you get a, uh, decision from your folks by then, for December sixth?
I mean, uh, decision's tough, right? I don't know, that's what, that's what's going through my head right now, we certainly have an opinion, doesn't mean you guys are gonna agree with it or like it, so. I'm more thinking, can we get to a resolution by the sixth? That that driveway, as we propose it, or as you propose it, is, is the appropriate one to be approved. And like I said, I've got, I've got three masters to please here, and if I can get all three of them to, to agree, then it'll be easy giving you guys what you want, I just, I'm nervous.
Okay, well, that's okay.
You're gonna fly over National Grid, you're going to think that the DCR really doesn't have a lever on this. And you're left with the homeowner.
That's correct.
That's, that's my.
Those are my three checkboxes, that's, no, it's, that's right.
So just, cause words have meaning, Zach said, um, traffic study, and we didn't say traffic study. Cause traffic study means a lot more than I simply said intersection and stopping site distances, which an engineer or a surveyor can do, a traffic study is a whole different animal, which, which you know. So I just wanted to be clear that that isn't something that we recommended.
What, what would be an appropriate way from your standpoint to establish, because you mentioned the average traveling speed, rather than the design speed or posted speed?
I said that.
Oh, you said that, okay. I mean, I can look into the Mass D, is it the Mass DOT requirements for stopping distance that, that is controlled here?
Ashto.
Ashto, okay, I can look into Ashto and see what their requirements are in terms of. Establishing it, yes, yeah, there are vertical curve dimensions and horizontal curve and stuff, and site distance and intersection distance, as you mentioned.
If, if, if it's only during the construction, if, if it doesn't meet it or it's close, if you correct, say what you're going to do.
So if it's close, and we say that we, we post signage that, that warns that there are trucks entering the roadway, that kind of thing, you're addressing.
Flagman, police detail.
Whatever, let's, we'll address.
Right.
You, you actually said that one night here, Mister Smith.
Yes, we, we, we discussed, we, we discussed that, yes. I'm not sure of the statutes that are involved, uh, I don't know if flagmen are.
Less than forty or less.
Forty or less, trips, you mean?
Miles per hour.
Um, miles per hour.
I think it's less than forty, and if it's more than forty, you need a police detail, that's Mass, Mass state law now.
What if it is exactly forty?
I think it's forty or more, you need a police detail. I would leave that up to the police chief personally.
Okay.
Through the board, of course.
Yeah, it's, the, the actual deliveries to the site should be fairly contained in, in the period that they would be required. Pardon me?
Your log.
Yeah, there's logging, traffic too.
And that's in and out, constant.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's true.
How to quantify that, really.
We made a no-left turn down that hill.
Well, I would suggest, uh, I'm gonna go back to the site, and if you wanna meet at the site, and you can show me the site distances then. Or one of my engineers, if that's how you want it, um, that's cool. But I was gonna stand out there, wherever the driveway decision is made, stand out there and try and visualize that, because maybe there is no left turn allowed out of that driveway. For safety reasons, and you can do that.
I, I'm not familiar enough with the area to know why they would be leaving to the, to the west. It, it seems like most traffic would wanna be coming towards town.
You know, you never know which mill they're taking the lumber to, or.
There's another road up to Templeton.
And when GPS.
Not very far down.
Yeah, I'd have to look into how everything.
It's a windy path, the route too.
When GPS comes into play with truckers.
Yeah, they may go the other way, because it's two minutes faster.
Right.
Okay, so, let's, uh, let's wrap this up here, because we're gonna continue this now till the sixth of December, we got an agenda for it, the discussion. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve the right to postpone it if we don't have anything coming in, just give me a heads up, cause I don't wanna spend another hour discussing this, I think we can make some site visits, and we can make some decisions in the field as to what we have to do. If we don't have the, if we don't have the reports.
That he'd like to have three weeks in advance of the, of the meeting, so, that's what my target is.
Then, let's, you know.
Yeah, we'll, then we'll know that relatively soon.
All right, so I'll obtain a motion to, uh, continue the hearing until December sixth at seven PM.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so we're, close the hearing till December, I'm sorry, we continue the hearing till December sixth, seven PM. So be it, let's work on this.
Thank you.
Just, just one quick thing about this, is there enough money in the, for Bill paying Bill?
We provided an additional four thousand dollar deposit.
Looking out for Bill here, something.
Bill doesn't get paid by them, he gets paid by us.
I know, but is there gonna be enough money to pay him, so?
He was concerned about getting up to the limit of what would've been, had been provided, so we, we provided an additional four thousand dollars with that.
We're good.
Should be good, yeah. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you, and thanks for your help on the matter before we begin as well.
Have a nice week.
Thanks, Dean, thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
With my, uh.
You can have that water.
Okay.
You can carry it.
New since the last time I was here.
We, we take that out now that you're leaving, we have a new, we have a new comfortable cushion seat for residents. Taxpayers get the. You got the, you had the hot seat. Try to keep your comments short. Thanks, fellas. Sorry we're late, folks, if you'd like, come on up, or you may be comfortable, they're fine.
Cushion.
I lied. Don't have that in the budget. Just trying to make him feel a little uncomfortable. You're welcome to sit there if you're comfortable, that's fine, or come on up. Oh, I need a motion to re, well, we've got Tom to get back.
We can do it, Tom.
Yeah, we got a court, motion to reconvene the planning board hearing.
So moved.
Meeting, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, pose, we're back in session, wonderful. Okay, so, Street or Road. Good to see you again.
Thanks, thanks for having us.
A simple one.
Very simple.
We like the Kiss method. Well, I read your emails, anybody else?
I read it.
We all up, up to date, do you wanna summarize what, well, let's wait for Tom, well, just in case he didn't get it.
Well, I only have the three of you, I don't have your email, um, address personally, but I did send it to the planning board, so I don't know if they print it out and give it.
If you send it to the planning board, I should've gotten it.
She sent it.
I gotta go talk to Zach.
Oh goodness, let's see if she prepared it for us tonight.
So we wanna read the letter into the record or?
Here we are, right here. Did you see it?
Nope.
All right. So we got one August thirtieth, we have one October twenty-five.
Thank you.
Um.
And those are the. That was just last week, right? That's it, yeah, so.
Anybody bring any leftover Halloween candy or anything, I'm starting to have the shakes, I had so much.
It's not very good, though.
Heard that the police department had tons, so you could just go right in there and get something there.
They don't let me in there.
Go through that file cabinet over there, we'll get you over there in a hurry. It's an inside joke. All right, Tom, did you read this letter from the twenty-fifth?
With Tom.
Me? Yeah, Tom.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, great.
Mister Rhodes.
All right, so, does anybody have any, let's, let me take this backwards, anybody here have any comments that you'd like to make about Street or Road, we'll start on this side, and we'll go over there, how's that?
About Street or Road?
Hmm, about the, about the.
About the letter?
About the proposals, and what citizens on Street or Road would like, any reactions?
Tom?
Well, I, uh, I made myself as clear as I could last time, I'm not interested in spending a lot of money on lawyers and surveys and whatnot, if everybody on Street or Road knows where that road is, they scraped it and compacted it for some money, some amount of money, which I hope you've determined. But I think it's like, certainly less than three thousand dollars, I don't know.
You mean for the town to have done it, or?
For the town to have done it last time, they did it just, a month and a half ago.
Six hundred and seventy-four dollars that they spent.
It's probably more than that, isn't it?
No, because they didn't have to bring anything in, all they had was a grader, they spent about four, somewhere between four and six hours.
Okay, well, maybe.
I figured six hours, and it was seventy-four dollars and thirty cents an hour at six hours, so.
Performance is no indication of future performance, but it's still a relatively small amount of money. And I don't know why we can't just do that again, and again, and again. And the, the complaint that was voiced was, well, the planning board will change, or the select board will change, or whatnot. But I, I don't know why it isn't handled the same way these many other roads that you've listed in your letter are handled.
Well, historically, it has been moved, done that way, Tom.
My question would be, is Halfrey, Mount Jeff, Mile, Fertie, and others, um, I found a Grove, Grove Road over near Burnshirt.
Over there, yep.
Uh, I was looking around on the map, you know, the, the satellite photos, to see what's out there.
Yep.
Um, if they're all, um, accepted by the town, and I don't know that. And if they are all maintained by the town, and I don't know that, then I consider um, Street or Road just another one. And I don't know why it requires a lot of hoopla, why can't we just scrape it and compact it? And that's it. That's.
I can't disagree with that.
And I just thought that was the most cost-effective, simple way out of it, and everyone's worried about setting a precedent. Well, if all these other roads are already having it done, Streeter isn't setting a precedent, all these other roads have. So.
If, if, if I might make your guess, I would, I would guess that those other roads are accepted by the town from years ago.
Well, I don't wanna guess, I think, there is a, I know, I understand that, I understand that completely. But, um, I, I think there's a road list and this kind of stuff, I just haven't had a chance to research that.
I got it all, there's a road list, there it is.
Well, no, that's, that's what's called the street list.
Oh.
I, I believe there is an accepted, a list of accepted growers.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yep, that's what, that's what this is right here.
That's what that is, yes, not, not the book.
Yeah, the, the spreadsheet is, but the spreadsheet and the book don't necessarily match.
Agree, they sure don't match.
The, the, the book has the address of every resident, be it, i- independent of what kind of a street it is.
Yes, and even this list that, that we have, that, that the town has, of course, it's not particularly as this list, it's not particularly updated in terms of um, some of the roads that used to be dirt roads that are now, you know, maybe they have grindings on them, or maybe they have some paving on them that have been updated, so, it's a little.
But it's accurate from an accepted point of view.
Yes.
Yep.
That's what they base that chap in ninety-one on.
So. Your conclusion?
Well, I, I guess I need a little more information about these other roads, uh, o- other dirt roads in town. Accepted or not accepted? Maybe the length of them or something, you can get off, the unpaved length, uh, and their condition, and, and are we scraping them and compacting them?
So Halfrey Road, um, is, is exactly like Street or Road, it is just a gravel road, has been accepted by the town, um, I could, I can give you a date if you wanna have a date, um, of when it was accepted, but that is how it's maintained. They grade it, they bring in gravel when they need it, and that's what they have done since the roads have been accepted.
Is there any other unacceptable road that is scraped and graded and compacted?
Unaccepted?
Yes, the, the gentleman behind you made the point that Streeter, and I was hoping it wouldn't be unlike every other road, but apparently it is, uh, if all these other ones are accepted, then maybe my logic doesn't hold up as well, but for the cost, it, it holds up.
I don't know of any others, I think all the other ones are, for instance, Mile Road. I don't think that's.
Mile Road's a town road.
Mile Road goes through.
Right.
But the town owns, is, is accepted.
Accepted?
Yeah, that's an accepted town road, yep.
Then what am I thinking of?
Mount Jeff goes through.
Um, Jefferson goes through.
That's an accepted road, right?
Also an accepted road.
And they grade, they grade that twice.
Is, is Grove an accepted road? That's over near Burnshirt, near the little pond. Is Fertie?
Fertie is an accepted road, it is.
Accepted it in ninety-eight or something.
They accepted it in ninety-eight or something.
Like eighteen twenty-two. Fertie is like a, it literally looks like a cart road if you were to go down it.
Yeah, I looked at it, I have a picture over here from the satellite.
One house on that road.
That's the one off of, um, Cruz?
Hale.
Oh, Hale.
Maybe one, I don't know where the other one's driveway is.
Oh, Fertie, but that's not even a road, is it?
It's like, it literally looks like a driveway, and, and like not a well-used driveway, but that has been, I, I guess, I, I have tried to do a lot of research, I truly don't understand why Hubbard, why Street or Road was never accepted, when it has been in existence for so long. Um, but to go through, um, the old minutes of the town and try to figure out what roads they talk about is not simple, as you've probably tried to look for some yourselves. Um, it just, when I look at something like Fertie Road, and that got accepted with one little house on it, I don't understand when Street or Road's been used as a pass-through for a hundred and fifty years, how that never has been accepted, or not that we're aware of anyway, so...
See, Street or Road is unique in the fact that it's a through road that's been used since eighteen ninety-six. It's been used by residents of town since eighteen ninety-six. The town has maintained it for most of that period of time. And the question about, like, Tom, your suggestion about just putting it on the line by the budget and having them do it, that's what they, it wasn't a line item on the budget, it was just part of the highway to Plowlands.
All the better.
Uh, I know, but that's, that's what they've done. But, but like everyone says, that select board or the planning board or someone, that changes, and in fact, over periods of time, it has changed. When, for, according to what Debbie has told me, and I've talked to some of the other people, they, the town, when they bought the house, the town was maintaining it. And they assumed that it's a private road, but the town was maintaining it. It's been used as a town road by town residents for over a hundred years. I think, I think this board should accept the road and the condition it's in, because it's exactly the same condition of four or five other town roads, and let the people of the town decide. It's not, our decision is only based on, well, we're going to let this road just go the way it is, just accept it the way it is, instead of bringing up the full subdivision standards. And I think we should, we should say, okay, let these people go to the selectmen, let them deal with the legal issues, let them deal with some of that other stuff, and let, bring it to a town meeting, and let the people of the town decide. Let, let the residents of that town make their case to the residents of the town.
Well, I, I don't disagree at all, the town decides, it's not us.
Oh, yes. And we only decide whether we would accept this road in the condition it's in, instead of having them spend tens of thousands of dollars to bring it up standard. And I don't think, I personally don't think that would be fair to the residents, because the town has been using, the residents of this town and other people have been using this town, basically going on a private road and, and not paying anything. They pay, what was it, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes. I just think that they, that that should be done, should be enough.
The only argument I've heard against doing it is that in order for the, and I'm not sure about this, but I think you are, man, um, in order to be accepted, you have to have surveys and easement transfers, and everybody has to agree, and, and it's quite a thicket to get through, whereas going down there with a grader doesn't have much of a thicket.
But that's not our decision, that, that stuff isn't up to the planning board. Uh, the planning board solely has to decide whether or not we will accept the condition of the road i- itself. Not, they'll have to figure that out with the selectmen, about the legal ease and the, and getting the, and the easements and all that stuff.
I, I went to a selectment meeting, I think two of them talked about this, and Brian Bullock, um, said that the planning board would have to do more than that. The planning board would have to define the standard, independent of the road, just define the standard for that type of road.
But we could def- we can define that standard be, to the standard that is, that currently exists, because it's the same standard that currently exists on five other town roads that we have in town.
I don't know that, I haven't driven them, I don't, I haven't...
Well, I think, I think you've...
Well, see, this, let's not get into this, this circular argument, because it's, it's, we're not going to go anywhere with it. But these acceptance of roads, streets, and ways methods that you see in section two point one, uh, s... Basically, those came about because, the same reason you guys don't have a public way, is because whoever developed the homes on that road never brought it to the town for acceptance. They originally owned all the land, ABC developers, put five houses down there. They still owned to the center of the road till they transferred that property to you. Now, you owned to the center of the road. It was either the developers' oversight or lack of initiative to bring that to town road to have it accepted. Or maybe they went out of business and couldn't do it any further. Uh, these regulations that we have, we've had those in place since probably two thousand and one, because of a situation that exists right here in town, up on, uh, Dogwood Road North and South, Blueberry. Where the developer told everybody, fifty-two households, because we had every one of them in front of us one night, that it was a public way, and that the town would take it, care of it, put it in writing, and then went, and they're gone. And it wasn't a public way. And these people just did not do their due diligence to find that out. That doesn't apply to you guys. Because after that situation, we wrote these conditions in, so that when a road gets built under our subdivision control law, it gets built to standards that aren't going to fall apart in two or three years, okay? So you're in a situation where nobody's disputing the use, nobody's disputing anything, and it's too far gone to go back and find whoever it was, the culprit, that developed it and walked out of town and left it all there. You're never going to get it back. Your petition to the town is legit, and I think it's legit for us to con, to look at these conditions and say, yeah, they're really not applicable, if we want to make a waiver, we should make a waiver. My only caveat is that in order to send that type of recommendation to the select board so that they apply that to the warrant, is that road must be laid out. It has to be engineered and laid out, which I think we have two or three copies of segments of the road, and those easements have to be granted. So we have a, an engineering or a survey task, and we have a legal task. And once that's done, then I think it's, uh, or I would, I would agree to a waiver, subject to those conditions being met, and then it goes to town meeting. Now, who's going to pay for those? I don't know. I would say that what we should do is vote to, vote to waive these requirements, leaving Street or Road in the condition that it's in, getting an estimate from Places Associates, who is our consulting engineer, for a layout of the road, and getting an estimate from KP Law to what the cost of this, um, legal work is going to be. Bring that to the select board, who's already agreed that you should have a public red, uh, public way, and they, I, if I understood them right, they were going to pay for whatever was necessary to do that. I think that's the town's responsibility. Hence, it goes to town meeting with the appropriate documentation, and if it's approved, it's a town road. The advantage at that point then becomes reimbursement from the state under chapter ninety money, so that those costs will basically be offset over time. And theoretically, your real estate value should go up, so there should be more revenue from the, the values that are on the, on the street.
So we can make a motion to accept the road contingent upon them satisfying the selectmen's requirement, legal requirements, to bring it to a town meeting.
Well, it's not the selectmen's legal requirements, it's the, it's the bylaw requirements. You have to have it laid out, it's just general law. It has, it has to be laid out, there has to be legal description.
But we, we can approve it tonight, it will accept it if those legal requirements are done. That way, they don't have to come back before the board again.
That's what I'm getting at, sure. Bill?
I just would like you to get a letter for your files from the police chief and the fire chief, saying that it's conditioned, that you want to accept it. If, if its condition is today, that they both write to you for your files that it's conditioned today as accepted.
They're not going to do that, though.
It's their job.
It's the same, if you ask...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
What, what about Bill, Tom? The, they have no jurisdiction about that. The road has been used by the fire and police department for a hundred and twenty years. The condition is no different than Halfrey, Halfrey Road or some, all these other roads. So to make them go out there and, and, and write a letter to this, is Panama asking the police and the fire department de facto to say that this should be a public road? That is, uh, is an unreasonable request.
No, I don't agree.
I disagree with that.
Every other town requires, I mean, what is the minimum standard for a road, and what's the purpose of a minimum standard for a road? The minimum standard for a road, under A and R or any other criteria, is that a person can get to their residence, they don't have to be able to drive into their garage. If you go to Newton, people climb flights of stairs, but you have to be able to get a fire truck, an ambulance, and a police car...
Public safety.
To a residence, and I'm asking you to make sure that you document for your benefit, and then when you go to town meeting, that the fire chief agrees, he can safely drive down that road in the condition that it is today.
That can be discussed at the town meeting by the fire, police, and fire chief.
Oh, wait, wait, timeout, we, we're not going to go, we're not going to get into this kind of an argument over this, because it's, it's not necessary for the waiver. It may be necessary for the select board to look at that, if they want to, because they're going to be ultimately the ones that are going to put that on the warrant. And, and I would tell you right now that I think it would be, it's a good CYA, but it's, that's all it is, because every house down there is being serviced as it is right now, you know? And the A and S...
There's a, um, a fire hydrant down there, too.
But they could offer constructive criticism, they could offer a suggestion.
They may, but I don't think it's their issue, quite frankly, I, you know, and I think it's going to complicate it.
Better to get the issues up on the table now than in six months at a town meeting.
But it's, if you call the fire department for a fire, your house, they're going to show up there, they're going to be able to access it.
They have been there, they were there this past spring.
You know, it's, it's...
They came to my house a couple of years ago, I had a chimney fire, we had, the big truck was down my driveway.
I, I, I just don't think it's, it's a, an exercise that's going to protect anything or, or do anything. And quite frankly, I don't want to give them any, any veto say in this as well, uh, or that they need to do this or that. I'm happy with that road as it is, you guys are happy with that road as it is. Personally, I would rather have it better, I would rather have it approved, but, you know, you've got to live there, not me. And as far as I'm concerned, once we get these issues out of the way so that the road can be accepted, then it goes to meet, goes to town vote.
I'm not sure who made the, uh, recommendation or comment, uh, at this meeting or a selectmen's meeting, but it had to do with the, uh, the order in which things get accomplished, uh, such as performing the legal work and the surveying work after the vote at town meeting, so that if it did get shot down, we don't spend that money, or the town doesn't spend that money, uh, for surveying, legal, et cetera. Uh, so again, the order in which things get, get accomplished, again, town meeting, recommend acceptance in its current condition, supported by the planning board and anybody else that wants to chime in on it, and if it's accepted, we'll then embark on the legal work to satisfy the requirements to get it, to get it done.
That's a conversation you would have to have with the selectmen.
I don't, I don't think it's feasible to do it that way, because at the last town meeting in June, Peter, we had a situation where the Day Spring Church came in with a contingency plan for their, um, whether or not they, they had a historical attachment that was going to help everything go on and on. Town rejected it, because town council didn't think a contingency for that would be, would be good. And I think you got to get your ducks in order, and I, you got to fight the fight, I think that's...
Yeah, the good news is, the, the whole street's been surveyed by Zoc at various times, and they can be, um, you know, paper clipped together in whatever way, an engineer can do that, and I think lay it out, um, relatively easy. Um, there's going to be varying widths at various places, um, and that's the current condition it's in. The challenge will be getting all the legal work together.
Well, the challenge will be getting the, the rest of the people in town to agree with you.
Well, getting a pricing on the legal work and on the surveying work.
Yeah, that's all we're doing, right, yeah.
That needs to be done first.
Right. And then that goes to the select board, and I don't, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't accept the cost, I mean, the cost of the cost. And as I said, it's all going to be reimbursable under the chapter ninety money that's going to come back, so it's an investment, that's the way it goes. And it's an investment that I think is worthwhile for the infrastructure of the town. I think the, the select board agreed with the comments I heard at the meeting I was at. So that's the process, I don't, I, I think that's just how we have to proceed. Get it over with, get this thing going, and then you have seven or eight months to do your politicking and, uh, you know, making sure that you get the folks at the meeting. Bill?
I just suggest you get a price from Zoc, he's going to be able to do it a whole lot faster and cheaper.
Well, that's fine, I've just thrown that to you because, you know, you know...
Do you think it can be pieced together with the various plans?
The problem is, a surveyor can't take the work of, should not take the work of another surveyor without verifying it. So if we, if my office has to survey it, we have to survey it, whereas Zoc can take his own work, because he's done it.
Right.
And he can put the pieces together probably a whole lot easier and faster.
Fine with me, it doesn't matter, it's just that you being our consultant engineer, that's the kind of advice I'd expect from you, but I didn't have it till now, so that's not...
How we phrase this motion, that we're willing to accept the town, the, the condition of the road as is?
Uh, hold on just a second, I'm going to look at this. Okay, we would make the motion to waive the conditions in section two, acceptance roads, streets, and ways, section two point one, conditions, subject to a, um, a survey and laying out of the roadway and easements being granted to the town.
So moved.
Second, can you make that motion as the chairman, or do we have to...
Oh, I made it.
He made the motion. I just phrased it.
Thank you.
Anybody, any questions? Discussion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So voted. That's it. So I think that, I think that is going to really help everybody, because I want to keep it simple, that's a great suggestion that Bill made. We'll do it through Zoc, okay? That, that's not the issue.
We, we've already called him, actually, so he's familiar with the fact that we're looking for something like that, and he has surveyed every, actually, one of the roads out there.
So what I, what I would suggest is, we're going to ask Bill maybe to coordinate that, if you could call Zoc and get that kind of, tell him what we need, get the price from him. His price plus Coltman and Page's price is going to go to the select board, if they vote the money to do it, you're in business, then, then we'll go to town meeting. You also ask them to put it on a warrant, once all that work is done. We'll leave it up to you guys, I guess, to get the easements from your neighbors, and everybody has the signature, sign off on it. You know, a little arm twisting wouldn't hurt, but that's the way it'll go.
And so in terms of getting the, the easements from, from all the neighbors, do we need some sort of a legal form for that, or we do?
That's, that's KP Law's, the town council, they'll develop...
The board's going to tell us.
They'll just develop it, and you'll go, sign, 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 sign.
I will.
I'll sign, Deb, I will, you want me to, I'll sign. I don't live near, for you, I'll sign.
Probably need a notary on that.
Well, maybe.
When they sign it, I will become a notary.
I'll take care of that, I'll talk to him.
It'll save money if you do, I'm sure.
You said that one person wouldn't sign it, that you can curve the road around them?
So, um, no, actually...
Actually, I talked to him, because according to what he says, the association owns to the other side of the road, the deed says that.
Yeah.
And he said that then takes care of that issue.
The, as I understand it, that's what we always caveat, uh, the recalcitrant of butter. Their deed, as explained to me, how am I doing? As explained to me, their deed says by the way, or along the way. And when it says that, what it means, the intent of that is, and the courts have upheld, and I'm not a lawyer, that it is by the proposed right-of-way, as opposed to the center line of the road. So if you transfer, it depends on how the deed reads, but if the deed reads says along the proposed right-of-way or something along that way, then you own to the sideline.
To, to the northeast side of Street or Road.
To the northeast, so it says to Street or, uh, Str- Street, Road.
To the northeast side of Street or Road.
There may be a chance that that... There may be a chance that that person only owns to the sideline and not to the center line, and it would be that straightforward.
Yeah, they don't, uh, we, we have, we actually have a deed that says Love Well Pond owns the entire road.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yeah. Not the whole road, just that.
Well, that section.
Oh, that section.
Well, yeah, that section, all the way across the road.
I was gonna say, well, that's easy.
All the way across the road.
That may solve that problem.
Right.
So then the one, the only one other, um.
But it still needs an attorney.
Right.
Yes, and a notary. Um, so the only other missing person that there is, is apparently a person that even the town of Harborsden can't find. Um, he owns one sliver of a walkway.
It's, it's, it's a fifty foot access to land behind.
Backland, yeah.
And apparently he has not been paying his taxes for a number of years and Harborsden can't, no.
Buy it.
I thought though, on that plan, um, there was a note, a note on that plan that said something to the effect that, that fifty foot stretch, if it's not developed within a window of time, that it would be, could, that it is conveyed to the butters on either side of it. The, I, I, it's a little note on that plan. Are you talking the one that goes down behind Dick's house?
Yes, yeah.
There's only one fifty foot strip there, it's on the west side.
Yeah. There's actually two, there's a, there's a, yeah, it crosses, but that is, that's, he has, he owns that piece.
Yeah, there's actually two. Yeah, but somebody else owns the other side.
But across it, on that plan, there's a note. And by operation of that plan being approved, that could serve almost as a deed to those people. Again, legal.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying.
Say, say, all right, say it wasn't, but then what does that leave us?
Yeah, what, yeah, where would that leave us at that point?
Lawyer, that's a lawyer question, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a tough one too.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, everybody else, everybody else on the road, and we have all of there, um, everybody's on board.
How far back in taxes are they?
I, I don't know if the person wanted to tell me exactly, but they said significantly.
It's available, public information.
That's a, that's a, you can ask that question, that's a public.
Public information, it's a list of all the tax, tax hours spreadsheet.
Public record.
Make a public records.
It's funny what's public record that you ask to get and you just can't get.
You have to make a public records request.
It's funny how the way the town works that way.
I, I have.
I'll give experience in that.
Make a public.
We've been there, don't we?
It's simple, make a public records, fill out a form, hand it to Joyce, you got ten days.
Yeah, it, it.
And they gotta give it to you.
It doesn't work.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for being open minded, Mr. Backo and all the rest of you, Benny, everybody.
We're your fellow citizens.
No, really, keep it simple, it's the right thing to do and I just got more.
I, I would probably suggest for your benefit and for the longevity of that road, that it's gonna be, uh, dirt until whatever, that you also request the selectmen to restrict commercial trucks on that, commercial truck traffic.
That was my favorite point.
You mean from passing through?
Sure, I mean, local traffic only and, you know, oil deliveries and things like that, but, you know, if, uh, you know, the eighteen wheeler's gonna make the trip around, he's gonna make the trip around, that's the way it goes.
I, that prob, that problem doesn't really exist.
Well, that's okay.
It was, it was brought up by your contingent.
But somebody with a, a ten wheel of, of gravel that's running eighty thousand pounds, doesn't matter whether it's, you know, it's a short, shortcut over the Grimes Road.
We have experience on other roads that get beat up very quick, yeah. Pitcherville, Seven.
So, well anyways, thanks for coming in.
We thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Well, you did all the work, so, thank you.
See you at the town meeting.
Oh, no, we're always the, we're always the ones that.
I get my info before.
Okay, thanks. I'll send it out. Thank you.
Good night, thank you, have a good one.
Thank you, good night, thanks, see you.
You're welcome.
Bye, Deb. Take care.
Did you ever sign this? Really?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you should have.
If you'd like to, fine. Didn't know it was there.
Jen, the new, uh, where are we now?
Just run away to.
Yeah, yeah, little Jen. She's a ball of energy though, so.
Occupied?
I think so.
Seen Dave Walker lately?
I did, I saw him last Saturday.
How's he doing?
Great, he's trying to sell his house in Lunenburg.
I gotta stop cutting wood. Where's he going?
North Carolina.
I know he walks. Get out!
Yep.
You gotta stop?
Why? Yeah, I, well, I've been cutting my old firewood for years.
He hasn't sold it, but he's trying. Cause he's old.
I cut like four cords, five cords, just put trees down and limbed it.
He doesn't want, doesn't want to.
He doesn't wanna do patrol anymore?
No, he's a member of the National Board.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Hundred fifty cords of wood and tops.
Year or two, I don't know when. But, uh, yeah, I think he's getting ready to leave New England.
I was, I cut them down and dragged them down with my tr- my truck.
I'm doing, uh, lift the back, this week, the week after, twelve, Sunday at twelve.
Yeah. You only gonna buy some tops?
No, oh, I might.
And he was supposed to be there for that, but I guess he's going on North Carolina to, uh.
You know where?
Look, I don't.
I'm looking forward to your solo. We spend a lot of time down there.
You heard about sixty percent of it.
Wife and the three little kids are down there.
I wanna grab them while they're here to, to provide yet another experts.
So we get out about every, two or three months.
In the next couple, three weeks, I'll ask him. He hasn't bought a house down there, I think that's why he's gone.
I wish people put it on their houses, it's solar. Houses unbelievable. Does he have relatives down there or? Even with this, this month has been a cloud, he was still.
He's got friends.
Okay. Have used, uh, uh, generated a. I figured if Dave was gonna move, he'd be moving north.
Yeah, no kidding, huh?
Or west.
Look, his wife has some say in it.
One of the big things I have is, is it cash flow wise, can they actually do it? Can these solo companies actually do what they say they can?
Wow, that's a shocker.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Sheila gonna be patrolling this year or?
I don't know. No, I think she's done with patrol.
And, uh.
Really?
Yeah.
The volume of.
All that work, all that?
All that work.
Because of incentive.
The issue she was having with Kevin just.
Drives the production cost down.
Knocked her off her feet and.
And what they're doing is they're counting on the, the, uh, production going up.
Actually, Bill London is the, well, yeah, was, yeah.
The cost going down, and as the costs go down, they continue to phase out the incentives.
Yeah, and he just backed out.
Yeah.
And then at the end, it's a self sustaining situation.
Well, I told, was talking to some guy this weekend, he was a, he was a logger, who's a adamant. Sheila got along great with Mike.
Yeah, I did too.
For other reasons. I, I always. The reason why these, these things are coming in is, and I forgot, the, the, the Mount Yankee just closed.
I just wanted to see what it was gonna be like. Without Mike.
The nuclear power station.
So I stayed for a year, the hill capped, but.
And Pilgrim's gonna be closing.
I resigned last year.
And they have to get, they have to replace the substantial amounts of power. Yes, go patrol.
Kinda.
Thirty-two years.
The big power.
How many?
The big utilities don't wanna lose their business.
Really?
At Wachusen? No, I was in Vermont.
And what they did, they have a requirement to have a certain amount of sustainable energy. And what they did was they, um, bought vast amounts of hydro from Hydro Quebec. That's where the, that's where the hundreds and thousands of megawatts.
Yeah, but they're trying to get the, that line down here, I guess that's a problem coming through for New Hampshire.
New Hampshire, yeah.
It's a real problem.
There's several lines. There's one in the ocean, you know, they, they come down different ways.
All right, let's move on here, let's get this show on the road. Discussion. Outstanding money owed town from D J Palm nominee trust. Finance committee requests request to referral to board of health. All right, let's take it from the top. D J Palm does not paid the bills for the consulting fees and attorney fees. We have sent them a certified letter with the invoice, they have not picked it up from the post office, therefore, we haven't got paid. The town now owes places and K P Law somewhere in the neighborhood of eleven thousand dollars. I have a figure, but I don't know what, eight thousand nine hundred, oh, wait a minute. Yeah, eight thousand nine hundred and seven seven, eight thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, I'm sorry. That's what we owe the two entities. So, I would entertain a motion to request a municipal lien be placed on the D J Palm nominee trust land off of Pitcherville Road that was part of the application for the gravel removal permit.
Seconded, can I discuss something?
Not till we get the motion, is that the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, second. Now, what would you like to discuss?
Short of that, have we sent them the letter?
Yes.
Wouldn't, didn't, yeah.
Certified mail.
And how many days has it been?
Return request.
How many days has it been since they got the letter?
They refused to pick it up.
Ten seventeen seventeen.
And the return request was as Tom stated, they refused to pick it up?
Hasn't been picked up yet.
Where did it go?
To the address on the application, D J Palm nominee trust, twenty Satel Road, Waltham, Mass.
Okay. Are we all done with them? Are we gonna incur any more costs?
Only if we have a cost for the lien, I don't know what that would be, it shouldn't be too big, it should be very minor.
So who, how would we do the lien? Would contact?
We would, we'd contact Coltman and Page and say, draw up municipal lien for the sum of and attach it to the parcels.
And it should be the cost, including the cost of the lien?
Yeah, we could do that too, yep.
So that's how the motion, that's how I'd like to modify the motion.
Okay.
Friendly amendment.
All right. So the motion is to, uh, recommend that the town attach a municipal lien for the cost of the consultant fees and attorney's fees, plus the cost to collect and place the, I'm sorry, plus the cost to attach the liens to the D J Palm nominee trust parcels of land.
Seconded, or agreed?
So that would be it. All right, so, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, great. Second part of that situation is, in order to get the money, we still may not receive it from these folks, but I wanna satisfy these bills. So my suggestion is we appeal to the finance committee to advance us the funds to satisfy the bills and then reimburse the finance committee when the money comes in from the people who owes the money.
It's not the finance committee, the finance committee has a, a fund that they can fund, they have money to pay, um, unexpected, unexpected expenses. So we're asking to, to go into that fund to take out the eight thousand dollars to pay Bill Murray, uh, to pay Pacers, from that fund, and if the money comes back again, I think if the money came back in, it would have to go back to the general fund. I don't think it could go directly to that account, but whatever way.
However they do it, you know, it's still, it's all our money, one way or the other.
Right, one way or the other.
Are we holding a significant amount of money of theirs from the, I mean, this thing all started with let's reclaim it. Are, are we holding a significant amount of money of theirs for the closeout of the permit, small potatoes?
No, we never, they were supposed to provide a bond and they never did, or we can't find it, one of the two.
Well, that was subject to the permit.
Right.
So we don't have, we don't have any cash or anything?
We got some, you, you paid some of it, didn't you?
No, no, he's talking about from the old permit.
Oh, the old permit?
Yeah, they rehab like twenty thousand dollars or something to get him to behave.
They either provided a bond and it expired or we never.
And if they did, we couldn't go after that anyway, it's not part of this application, so.
Okay.
We have to keep that separate.
So we would have to make an appointment with the select, the finance committee to make a request for that.
Why can't we just send them a letter?
No, let's go see him.
All right.
So is there a motion to do that?
I have a motion that we.
Request from the finance committee the sums to pay the money.
Yes.
All right.
No, he can go.
All right, great. Last but not least, do we wanna make a referral to the board of health to investigate the illegal dumping of the hazardous waste on that property? Also known as those concrete mounds.
It's more than concrete.
Is it more?
I thought it was.
Yeah. I wouldn't say hazardous waste, I would just say illegal dumping.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
What was it, three hundred and fifty tons?
I don't know, it's a lot.
Yeah, and what is the, what is the thing that we do about it? Are we suing them to remove it or are we?
We don't do anything, it has to go to the board of health, the board of health would have to investigate it and then they would have to issue a order. They'd have to decide what they wanna do.
Now, can they go to the board of health and s- s- we're not giving you permission to come on our property?
I don't know, we'll let them deal with that. I mean, our responsibilities.
I don't know, I, I think, I think the board of health has the, the, the right to inspect situations that have any kind of threat to public safety and health.
They've done it before, there was a, there was a situation on Fletcher property where, uh, material was dumped and upon inspection of the material, it was four mica countertops and all, all kinds of stuff that wasn't supposed to be there. And I've tried to do a trail on the, on the meeting minutes and it kinda peters out. But that somehow got resolved under the board of hel- health's purview.
The board of health has tremendous power, they can, they can issue a, an order for them to clean it up. If they don't, they can refer it to D E P and they have a lot more power.
Plus, isn't there a right of way going through that property?
Yes, there is, yeah.
That you can see the dumped material right clearly from.
Right, but the, the, the board of health has a lot of authority.
But what's the point, seeing it doesn't really help.
The, the board of health actually has the authority to regulate.
Oh, 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 oh.
The other thing, the board of health, if, if they deem this is a public safety hazard from these four wheelers and the slopes, that, that's something that you have jurisdiction on to, I'm pretty sure. And they're not secured their property, cause anyone can enter their property, um, anytime they want.
I thought the state law gave the planning board permission to walk on someone else's property, does it?
Only if an application is made and by making an application and only after due notice and reas- during reasonable business time.
Can you chalk with it, maybe?
Nothing good in there, I looked.
Tough night, I thought somebody.
I looked in the basket too, there's nothing good over there.
Used to pack, got it all. We should go to the select board's meeting and request a different sort of candy.
I knew I should've gone out last night to have something.
You wouldn't even, you wouldn't even need a mask.
Twenty-eight years in a row, nobody has come to my door to trick or treat.
Yeah, it's half a mile up your driveway.
How many years?
It's just, it's just.
They're over twenty for Sheila and I.
Yeah.
It's just crazy.
And you're on the road.
I know. So anyways, I make a motion that we go to the plan, board of health to, um.
Ask for the investigation?
Ask for the investigation and bring some photographs.
Again, that's a personal visit?
No, no, well, we can do that, we can just refer if you'd like.
I'd like to go.
Well, they have pretty frequent meetings.
Yeah.
We can drop in.
All right, we'll drop in. Next, solar facilities compliance.
We'll get a vote on that, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought we did.
No.
Is there a motion, is there a second to that motion?
I'm seconding the motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? So vote.
What a team.
Well, that's, this is the process, it's good.
We're expediting this process tonight. Solar facilities compliance. We need a subcommittee to follow up on this compliance. As Bill has mentioned a couple of times, there's been a change of ownerships, there has been a rumor of a bankruptcy, there has been, um, perhaps, lack of bonds being tendered to the town. We need to go through each and every one of the sup, uh, the solar farms, uh, files and update them and make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. Basically, that's what it is.
I have a package, or did, the other four. I started a package on the other four that I convert to.
I have a package of all the pilot agreements.
That's good too.
Which are probably above and beyond what you have, and I'm not sure they're even relevant.
I don't, anything relative to pilot. I just went to the registry of deeds and found ownership. But as Vince has said, nobody submitted an annual report. They're supposed to be monetizing the bonds, they're supposed to be putting.
They're supposed to be updating with money.
And, yeah, and, uh, so the construction bond is obviously gone on all of them and they're supposed to be putting a decommissioning bond to the benefit of the town.
Cash security.
Have we gotten that from Borrego?
Nobody. Borrego, yes. But Borrego has, which is why I ran out to talk to those guys because they are virtually complete on their sale for Gardner Road, two parcels on Gardner Road.
I thought they were.
And the only thing that's left is transferring of the bond and I mentioned to their project manager that their legal review team needs to look at the special permit and make sure they fulfill the requirements of the special permit, which includes the bond.
It also includes they have to notify us if they change, look.
They've done.
Change ownership, right?
They have done that.
They have?
Yeah. They've, they've informed you of intent. They sent you a letter.
I don't remember that one.
I've never seen that letter.
You know, we have a, I think we have a confusion between someone sends something to the planning board and it goes to the clerk. And sometimes it doesn't go anywhere.
It started with the board of assessors. They notified them first.
But that.
I think that's the pilot requirement.
Yes, but that's not the special permit that says when they change ownership, they gotta tell the planning board, I think.
I don't, based on the conversation with, that I had with Borrego this evening. The ownership has not yet changed, but they've informed. They informed the assessors and I think they copied the planning board, cause I got a copy of that notification of their intent to do so.
My point is, when they write the email address, planning board, it only goes to one person, our clerk. We should either change that planning board clerk to be a group address and then we'd all get it. Or we instruct the clerk to copy the, the complete board.
Oh, we should all have access to that address account through the town website.
I don't know how I would do it electronically, but I just, you know, with the carbon copy method, C C method.
So they say they're gonna, they're, they're transferring ownership of the.
Gardner Road.
Gardner Road. But they, had they paid their cash bond to the town for that decommissioning?
Yeah. Uh, no, cause their bond is the construction bond still, cash construction bond. And the decommissioning is a different bond, cause the amount goes down once it's built. Cause the risk factor is now gone. Once it's up and running, the risk. And then they're building up over time to meet the decommissioning, escalate the value established. Escalate two and a half percent over the life of the facility.
So we have, we, we've got the con.
Construction.
Construction bond, which is a hundred, I think it was a hundred thousand.
I think it was.
For both of them together. The decommissioning is about a hundred thousand dollars as well then.
Right, but it doesn't need to re, it needs, I gotta look at it, but it needs to reach. I think after twenty years, it's a quarter of a.